We're going to call the special meeting of the Board of Finance. To order, we'll start the meeting at five o'clock meeting, it's now 5:04. The agenda, the first item on the agenda is going to be the three board meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Education to-
Mr. Chairman, how about the pledge to apply? That's important, and it should be important to you, too.
Thank you for that. So what we're going to do is go over the- Go over the operating budget, capital improvement, and the capital non-recurring. And what I've asked is the Board of Education and the Board of Selectmen kind of give us a high-level presentation on what the drivers are for their budgets and where they see, where they are in the budget process now, just to kind of start the discussion on how the impacts are to their budgets, so we can kind of get a feel for what's going to be hitting their budget, then we'll kind of open it up to a discussion. So who would like to go first, as far as? The Board of Education would like to go first? Okay, good.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening, everybody. So I tried to be as succinct as I could. I have probably about eight to 10 slides to go through, and then we can, we can open it up. I had the opportunity to provide a preview to our Board of Education at the last meeting, similar main drivers, talking about where we are in the overall process. So the way I wanted to frame this is when we sit down for the planning process, gather building-based budgets, really think about, you know, our initiatives and how we stay in alignment with what our Board of Ed goals are. But over the past several years, we've kind of gone with this framework that acknowledges the fact that we're dealing with contextual factors or drivers that will help to keep costs down, but we're also faced with drivers or upward pressures that drive cost up. And it's how we mitigate those things and try to be as thoughtful as we can to come up with a reasonable number to put forward. Of course, enrollment on the downward side, these are all things I'll kind of touch on in the slide, just something we've talked about quite a bit. We've seen a significant decline in enrollment, particularly over the last five years. I have both the Connecticut economic climate to think about and the local climate in terms of contextual factors to be aware of. We have, we came to a board meeting here, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, not too long ago, where we just started some initial conversation about producing scenarios of various types that would certainly look to, look to keep costs down, and we recognize that and are prepared to engage in those conversations. On the flip side, insurance and pension obligations, one area of our budget that has seen the most significant growth in recent years. I think we've done some good things to try to mitigate those costs moving forward with negotiations. Innovation in technology, as well as mandates in technology, have been something we started to address last year in our budget, and I have some information this year moving forward. Responsiveness to special education needs. We have certain programmatic needs we need to take a look at this year that I'm prepared to provide a brief bit of background information on tonight, and then certainly at our follow-up board meeting. My board has asked for some more information there. Education reform and mandates, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this is year one of implementation of some of the largest educational mandates that we've been faced with, and they hit all areas of our organization. They hit the curriculum side with the Common Core standards, they hit the assessment side with a whole new series of assessments that need to be done online called Smarter Balance. So the Connecticut Mastery Test and the CAP test that we've become familiar with for so long as kind of measures of our public report card and how our students do and how our system does go away. And this year, we initiate in a pilot sense, and then next year in a live sense, a whole new series of assessments. And we've addressed some security, more on the capital side, but other things that we're thinking about in our school system. So enrollment, just to show a quick snapshot, and again, this is something we've talked quite a bit about. Over the last five years, decline of pretty significant measure, 578 students, almost 12% of our overall decline. Next year, we're projected to go down 77 students. It's actually a smaller decline than we've seen in recent years, but still that trend we continue to see and we forecast to see into the future for the next five years or so. Wanted to show you a correlation in staffing levels with the decline in enrollment. I know that's something we talk about on an annual basis in questions that come to me, as your enrollment goes down, what happens with overall staffing levels. So last year, we talked about this, and I will this year as well. When we take a look at our class size guidelines and we roll forward our enrollment, we think it's important that we take what we're calling responsible reductions of FTE, or of staffing levels, that don't impact program in a negative way, but kind of right-size our organization as, as we have less students to serve. So I think you can see a trend of doing that. As enrollment has declined in that same period, we have reduced almost 50 full-time positions. The spike in 1213 is the spike of full-day kindergarten, which was, I think, seven or eight positions that were added through grant funding that year. And then we reduced our overall staffing levels last year, and we'll do so again.
So these FTEs are both grants and-
When we report on FTE, whether, yeah, we report the whole, whole number of people that work for us, we don't segment it out. I mean, we have the grant page that shows what we pay for in grants in our budget.
How many people are through grant? I can't recall, was it 20?
I don't know, Burke would have that, probably.
21 or something.
Between IDA grant, which is a special ed grant.
So this is all in there, so if we break out the grant piece, really the one through the budget process.
Yeah, I could easily do that.
27.52.
Okay, for the grants. There's two main grants, there are the attendance grant, which is the chef grant, and the IDEA grant, which is a special education grant. So just to go back, about a 7% decline in the overall staffing levels at a time when enrollment went down.
Can I make a comment, or would you like us to wait until the end?
Either way, fine.
You picked a year, a year when there was a sort of bump up, sort of from the high point in, in staff, which was 2008.
Yeah.
But actually, if you go back a few more years, which is when the student enrollment started to decline, student enrollment, at least just from the CAFR that we just got, student enrollment actually is down 13.7% from the year 2005.
I'm just showing a five-year snapshot.
Yeah, okay. It's just, I just want to point out that that's a snapshot, that's a little bit different than, you know, if you're looking at sort of what's the peak of declining enrollment.
Right.
And if you look over that same time period, from the peak of, of enrollment to present day, that actually staffing, at least according to the CAFR, is not down compared to that year of 2005. So we can go back and look at that, look at the CAFR, but-
Flip back, do you have the, yeah, I think the highest was like 5,016 or 17.
5,018.
5,017.
5,018, according to the CAFR.
So he started a year or two after that decline?
Yeah, it's been a format we've done as a five-year run, as relevant as we can.
No, I understand, you just pick a year, but it gives a different picture.
Careful of in there, I got trapped by it. I'm not sure, in the, in the CAFR, they put the 10-1-13 enrollment compared to the year before's budget. So that's some of the things I was trying to square up the numbers, so looking at that report, it's, I got misled by it, but it's, it's got the right numbers, it's just the question of the right periods.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
It'd be good to, it is always hard looking at different charts, because the numbers don't square up.
Yeah, I mean, when we provide you the background history, we go back, I think, 30 years or whatever we go, so.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so this is just again a snapshot, working, Lynda, to your point in the last, you know, several year run of what we've done in terms of enrollment decline and corresponding budget increases, that we've averaged a decline of about 115 students per year, and we've been in the ballpark of a budget increase of about 1.5. We're projected to go down 77 students, and certainly we're early on in the process here of developing where we'll be overall in the budget. Benchmarking our per pupil expenditures, this is something we look at on an annual basis, our per pupil costs, and then where it kind of sits in terms of comparables to the state of Connecticut, comparables to the Hartford area, and to the DIR. We've slipped a couple, in, you know, I think four positions, I don't have the notes in front of me, from last year in Connecticut towns, and we're just about the same, I think we're in the same spot or one either way in Hartford area and within our DIR. So relatively speaking, in a similar place, at least amongst comparable districts in our range. And this is where I just want to, you know, talk about some of the major drivers, what we're thinking about as we're planning and moving forward. Again, that piece where we recognize the need to reduce the overall size of the organization as the enrollment goes down, try to do that, of course, with our initial planning without impacting our programs in a negative, in a negative way. We use our Board of Ed class guidelines to guide that. It's always been a community value, a value of our board, that's the tool that we, that we measure that by. We're looking to increase access of technology to our students and our teachers. Again, this is both, some of this is innovative practice and changing practice in teaching and learning, some of this is trying to prepare to respond to the Smarter Balance mandate, which is a testing platform that is done, all on computers, done all online, which will start next year, is piloted this year. Address some special education program needs, again, the insurance pension obligation that I talked about, and certainly the contracts are the largest driver overall in the budget. So to put some initial numbers to what those drivers are, and kind of tell you how we, we frame this out from a presentation standpoint, the upper part of this, where it says additions, that's kind of taking the assumption that you're taking our whole organization, current size, rolling it forward into next year, and taking the fixed costs by fixed costs, I mean, the negotiated contracts, and then the other main driver in there you'll see is the insurance estimate, which is, is information that comes into a clearer picture for us over the next month and a half or so, prior to the formal presentation of the budget. So that piece where you see preliminary estimated increase in health insurance of 5.7% is an estimate at this point. So you can see the largest driver certainly is the teacher's contract, but overall, you roll that forward, it's an increase of $2 million or 3.08% to the operating budget if our organization stayed the same size.
The 560 there, the OPEB or health insurance, is that mostly health insurance, or, we don't have the OPEB number, do we?
We don't, we don't have the final OPEB or pension, that, that number includes our OPEB.
Right.
Can you see there?
Just a, what'd you, what'd you think the insurance increase has been?
It's just the very preliminary limburg and ripple, it's, there's a lot, a lot to come.
In the next month and a half, month?
Yes.
Okay. So that can certainly be an area for us that we continue to look at and report out on, and hopefully have some flexibility.
Matt, the 560 number there is both health insurance and your estimate on OPEB?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So then we go to the second piece of the bottom part, where we talk about reductions. So we take the average number of retirements over a six, seven-year period that we've seen, some of them we've already validated in terms of people that said were retired, others we assume will have. That's the difference in cost of a teacher retiring at the top end of the scale, and then we plug in the cost of a teacher, not at the low end, but at about step five, in the middle of the step, more conservative to talk about, and the difference that we show there in savings or reductions is the difference between the high end and the low end. The next two bullet points, you'll see decrease of five FTE, so those are classroom teaching positions in our elementary schools due to enrollment. Again, we're able to take those reductions without going above our class size guidelines, so this is something I know that when we talk and plan with our principals and our faculty, they need to understand, too, it's not great if people lose jobs, certainly, but we have our guidelines to, you know, to help us make our decisions, and we need to be responsible within that, and we've been fortunate to be able to offset those reductions with retirements and things in the past, so hopefully that will happen, but that's a snapshot at the elementary level, down five sections, which is pretty, pretty significant. A decrease of seven FTE at grade seven through 12, so that's taken the middle school and the high school together. Where we take FTE from the high school doesn't become entirely clear until we do course registration, but based on enrollments of cohorts and moving forward, there's an estimation that between, you know, three to four potentially FTE at the high school, or three to four at the middle school, where we're going to be able to probably get, reduce some of the partial teams, I don't want to get into the complexities of teaming structures, but partial teams because they see a decline in recent years at the middle school. So overall, I know we talked quite a bit about enrollment going down, and what is the corresponding reduction, and if you look at the driver of the teacher contract of close to $1 million, and you look at the reduction, kind of the correlation of the reduction of staffing levels, it pretty much washes out that one significant driver. So want to give you, I don't know if people have questions on this page, just go ahead.
I do have one.
Yep.
I guess I'm surprised at the size of those numbers, are those fully weighted salaries with the benefits and everything in it, when you're looking at a reduction?
We use a number, is the number 76,000, Burke?
76,780, and we've historically updated that each year, we choose a, a middle-range step, and we add an assumption for health insurance of a family plan, and we've used that consistent model, and we've just revised it each, each year based on the step system.
So it's only waiting for the full cost of the benefit?
I mean, you have to realize if those, you know, if you don't have a retirement to absorb, or, you know, you're offsetting actually the lower salary of the teacher in terms of how those decisions are made than a higher-end teacher, so that's why it's inclusive.
Matt, could you have more than eight retire, or is that still an estimate?
We could, that's, that's an estimate. So that's just, again, looking at the five years, and those come in, real no consistent pattern to how those, those might come in.
Do we have incentive to notify you?
We have an incentive in our, our contract currently as it's, as it's stated, and it kind of gives us a three-year outlook, it's helped us for planning purposes, but it kind of, I don't want to say it disallows us, but makes it more complex to come and do any kind of, of retirement incentive. I know we looked at that a couple of years ago and didn't really see the cost savings benefit to doing it, quite honestly.
How many have retired, let's say, this budget cycle we're in, how many retired this past year?
We had quite a bit of movement, I don't know how many retired, I think we had 11 or 12.
Yeah, because usually 11's what it's been trending around, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
So can I add those, and you're saying there'll be a reduction of 20 based on the current projections? Or is the-
No, no.
Offsetting the-
Good question. So there's a reduction of 12 FTE, the other savings would be a wash of-
Position change.
Somebody leaves at a high level, and we rehire at a middle, more like a realized savings?
Okay.
Yep, good question.
But I mean, if you only have eight retire, you're actually playing, you know, some people are being let go.
It's a difference between the eight and the 13.
And the 12?
12, yeah.
Could be, could be, yep.
Yep.
We good on this one?
Yep.
Okay. We've also taken, kudos to Burke and his staff on this, because we've done a much deeper dive into other areas we can talk about as the organization continues to get a little bit smaller, that we can try to capture some efficiencies with. So really looking at more of our per pupil expenditure model for things like instructional supplies, equipment, how do those costs really relate to the number of people as opposed to, to when you had a larger organization? So transportation is an area, I kind of call it the sleeping giant, nobody talks about it until something's wrong, and then it garners a lot of interest, but we believe with the enrollment, certainly 500, 600 less students we're transporting on buses, that we can consolidate and not have as many buses running, so we can probably take two buses offline, and that's the realized savings from taking two buses offline. Utilities is largely involved with, it's an estimate of the modular removal project, that those were heated and cooled and functioned on a different system than the core of our buildings. We have a meeting after this to discuss phase two of that project, but we feel we can capture some savings in utilities.
How many did you take down in the modules?
We took down 7,500 square feet at Tooton, which was our largest, I think it had-
Top-class classrooms, was it?
Oh, five, eight?
Eight.
A lot of space, that was really in tough shape. So that's been good in the school, it looks great, it looks terrific with the, with the space down.
And it's not really worth anything, is it?
Those ones were so old, Nick, that, you know, 10-year life, and I think some of them were-
We advertised them, processes for, for both, there was this small trailer at Latimer that, that lent itself better to actually moving, but these other modules, they, they come in and then they were attached to each other, so it was not like they're easy to take apart, so that, that did not pan out, but we gave that our best try.
Yep. So taking a look at these areas in our initial planning process, we feel we can, we can find cost savings of an additional 248,000, which is about, I think, like a .35 reduction.
What was in equipment again? I missed the equipment.
Equipment is taking a real hard look at our equipment requests, and just having our building-level folks prioritizing and, and really saying, okay, what are some things that are, I don't want to say nice to have, but what are your, your major needs, and separate them from something that can potentially be moved off till next year.
Does it impact the capital non-recurring, or is that outside of this?
Pretty much outside of that.
With the buses, I assume you're going to need two less buses, and usually that's where you put those through?
Not, not exactly two less, well, we've been, we've been careful to, you know, to, to not just do the same amount, really look at the age of our buses, and I know from a comparative point of view, our, our buses are not replaced faster than the norm, we, we get a lot of years out of them.
We have, what, 33 of them or so?
About 30.
30.
Are you going to take them down to 28, or just keep 30, but just maybe smaller ones, or a different size, or?
We will, we will analyze that, we haven't made a final decision yet on what, on what the buses would be replaced, so, but we have typically alternated and had some years two, some years three, new ones.
Point of information, quite a few years ago, we used to buy a group, large group of buses all at once, and we went to putting it through the capital non-recurring, and they buy three a year, and had a 10-year cycle, so-
Smooths it out.
So that smoothed it out, and our board always kind of made sure they bought the three, and so if something's changing there, then obviously it changes the way we look at capital non-recurring, and then, but what it does is then they get 20% of that cost each year goes into their budget and phases up, so in effect, it's into their budget and their operating, the reimbursement, so.
I do have a question just about buses, though. The highs, a lot of the high school kids refuse to take the loser cruiser, as they call it, and drive.
Did they call it that?
They do, I'm shocked.
Heard that in my house a couple times.
I'm shocked.
Go ahead.
I always took the loser cruiser.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I'm just wondering, when you plan the routes, because I, I can tell you, in my neighborhood, I see the buses driving around practically empty, because hardly anybody takes them if they're in high school. Do you have to plan as though everyone is going to take the bus, or do you, or can you plan?
That's a good question. They, they plan on like a certain capacity of the bus, I don't know, or the certain capacity of kids that are eligible based on, based on history.
Isn't there a way to sort of look at how many actually take it?
They do, and we, we've kept data on that, the problem is, I know that that's the perception, there are, there are times when the buses aren't empty like that, and that's the time when you say, oh, okay. And a couple of years ago, we actually tried to do this, we took two buses offline, I was involved in HR at the time, they had some circumstances, we're like fall sports started a little later, I can't remember the specifics of what it was, but the buses were so overloaded, we, we had to make some adjustments midstream. So it's something we have, actually some new software up in our, our transportation office, we're really taking a hard look at consolidation of routes and everything, the challenge is we still cover the same amount of space. So, you know, it makes sense to say, hey, you can get rid of X, but what you don't want to do is create hour and 15-minute runs for little kids, because they're on the bus forever, so, yeah, it's a balancing act, but we definitely feel like we're at the point where we can do some, some level of consolidation without having to reverse it and go back, that's what I worry about.
Okay.
Just to, on the transportation number there, that's operating costs, not, we're not talking about capital costs.
Right.
Or capital non-recurring.
And on the utilities, I know you have a multi-year plan for the shutdown of the modulators, any chance you've looked at the ability to speed that up so we can get some more utility savings earlier?
We're going to, we're going to look at options tonight. One of the complexities is the preschool program, and I'm going to talk in a little bit, and the, and the growth of the special needs preschool program in particular, and the complexities of the space over at Squadron Line that we built year one, that have us thinking we want to do one before the other, and, I mean, I would just hesitate, I mean, I don't want to say no, but I would hesitate to really taking that all on at once with some of the complexities we're dealing with, with the reconfigure we already did when we took Tooton Hills Ready Set Go preschool program and put it at Squadron Line. Some of the unknowns that will come into shape as we do, we do further planning, of course, we've talked about the insurance, OPEB and pension were mentioned and talked about as well. Burke, I'm not sure what the, the bidding timeline is, but I know that hasn't come into, to full picture for us yet as well, and of course, the ECS grant, which is the, the state grant we get of about $5 million, it's been quiet on that front thus far, that's something we make the assumption of, of what the governor puts in his budget when it comes out, is how we have historically planned for that. We haven't got any real information about moving forward on ECS, so we're moving forward as if it will be status quo.
But you haven't heard any negatives?
Not at all.
I wouldn't expect it.
It's been very quiet, very quiet.
When's the governor's budget? I'm trying to-
February.
The 6th, I think?
Is it the 5th?
6th. A couple of things I believe in, in the initial planning process here, we have to be really mindful of, that do require resources. I talked about some of our special education programming needs, and last year, the board was really supportive of some structural changes that we put into place, some department supervisors, somebody that we hired in a part-time capacity to manage some of our outplacement, they're called PPT meetings, they're meetings when you get together with parents and, and school staff to really plan programs for, for students. So we put some of those small measures in place that I think have, you know, moved communication forward and, and put us in a better place. We have a program at the elementary level, it starts in preschool, age three for students, it's called the Ready Set Go program, some of you may be familiar with the program. It's housed in two locations, it's housed at Squadron Line School, and it's housed at Tooton Hills School, and it serves a certain segment of our artistic student population. These are students that have pretty significant needs and require quite a bit of resources, and we have seen an actual uptick of 25% of enrollment in that program, and I think we need to, we, we have to respond to current year needs because of resources that need to put in place, and we need to be really thoughtful about how we plan in the future and make sure that we continue to provide really solid programming and the supports that the teachers need, and the supports that the parents need to set everybody up for success.
Matt, 25% over what time period?
Since October.
Oh, my gosh, that's enormous.
So it's, it's been, you know, like I said, it's preschool through, through grade six, quite a bit of the uptick is with the preschool population, three and four-year-olds. We had a, an individual that served in a capacity for us that I think was very valuable with the Ready Set Go program, that really served as a great conduit of communication for parents, great professional development for teachers, and really did a terrific job in helping us program student needs. This individual left several years ago, went to another district, and we reallocated those resources in a, in a different way, kind of with a behavior specialist. I really feel strongly that this program needs some oversight in terms of an individual that's really dedicated to program improvement on the Ready Set Go program. It's not a concept that's unfamiliar to other programs that we have, you know, when we look at an English department, we have a department supervisor, we look at any other major program in our district, it has an individual that kind of heads up that program and takes ultimate responsibility for that program. I really feel it's vital that we look at a position for this program that can help service the needs of not only the students, but the parents and the teachers, and help from a transitional standpoint, when students leave elementary school, go to middle school, leave middle school, go to high school, and high school and beyond until they're, until they're 21, a consistent person that can really help smooth that process. This is not an administrative contracted position, it's a teacher contracted position that would have a stipend. Again, my board has asked that we come back and provide another layer of detail on the things on this sheet that would, would be cost drivers for us, and we plan to do that next Tuesday, be more than happy to send those PowerPoints or that information to you for consideration, or have you come to that meeting and kind of engage in that, engage in that as well. Support staff for that program as well, which is really paraprofessional support, these people do an incredible amount to ensure the success of the students and the learning of the students throughout the day. Again, we need to find ways to address those needs right now, within our current budget, and then make sure that we plan thoughtfully as we move forward. I'm also allocating additional dollars for out-of-district tuitions, there are students that we make the decisions, you know, as part of their planned program with parents, that an outside placement is the correct placement for those students, we budget for that net of what's called excess, an excess cost grant. We've seen an increase of several students that have been placed in outplacement programs this year, and we need to respond accordingly in planning, in planning our budget moving forward. I think, you know, when, when you think about those first three bullets, they're all kind of tied into the same concept, and that is, we have really good, strong in-house programs, we need to make sure that we continue to meet needs with students and program the best way we can, because what we don't want to do is not provide the services that are needed- services that are needed and then be in a position where, uh, we used to be able to service a, a certain kind of student effectively, and now we don't, we end up, uh, in an outplacement situation. So I just want to be mindful of, uh, the entire situation, and that we're doing the best we can to, to meet the needs of the kids. Technology, equipment, and staffing, uh, again, the board, the Board of Education was supportive last year with a move, uh, in this direction. Innovations in technology are certainly something that's challenging, uh, to keep up with. Um, and we are on the front where, uh, we're faced with the mandate of smarter balance, which, uh, students will take all their assessments, uh, online, um, on a device, and we're looking to increase access technology for our students, for our teachers, so we can really have more of a seamless integration between what we teach, how we teach it, and what we, what we assess, so.
Is this technology you're referring to here just related to special ed, or school?
No, this is not special ed at all. I'm sorry, Linda, thank you for the, for the question. This is an organizational need when we look at, uh, how we're delivering instruction, uh, how we're going to have to monitor assessments, and how in, in the perfect world, you want those things kind of mirroring each other, so that, uh, students are familiar with the way, uh, they're going to be assessed, so.
And you actually had mentioned access to technology in an earlier slide.
Yep.
And I just wanted to ask about that. I, I think I read somewhere that our ratio of computers to students is one to two. Is that correct?
I don't know how close it is to that. I don't believe, I don't believe it's quite there yet. I know we, we presented to the, uh, Board of Ed at the end of last year, um, a plan to kind of start to move towards increased access and, and, uh, you know, kind of a one-to-one model. We're certainly not there yet, and this isn't a move to get us to a one-to-one model. You've seen some districts move in that direction. This is kind of, we want to ensure that when a teacher is ready to do a technology-based activity with their students, they have ready access, seamless access, uh, right there, and we have that on the assessment front as well. So it's kind of a, a march in that direction. This would be about two-hundred thousand dollars, but it would also be inclusive of a position, an additional, uh, tech support person, which is about a forty-five to fifty-thousand-dollar position. As we've increased access, now we have a different dynamic towards the number of devices, uh, we're managing on the ground. So that would be inclusive of some additional technology in one person.
So, so the seven-fifty numbers for all five of those?
For all five of those.
The technology, equipment, and staffing is about two-something, you said?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, yep.
Yep, you have the ready, set, go, is, is, you know, with benefits, probably about a hundred. Support staff closer to two hundred, and outplacement closer to two hundred.
And how many people does that represent in addition of, that slide?
Overall people?
Yep. How much staff are you adding there?
Well, the, the tech person would be one person, there would be one special education teacher, one program coordinator, so that's three people. The support staff, I can't really answer in people, Barbara, because it's a matter of, are we looking at part-time people to, to match hours, where you can get a, many more people for same amount of money as you could, um, with full-time, full-time people with benefits, so, three to five. I, I don't know, if we went part-time, it could be considerably more for the same amount of money. Uh, when we think about the support staff, I'm, I'm much more concerned with, are we covering hours and do we provide flexibility than I am with headcount, as long as we're staying within the dollars we allocate it. Uh, overall, it's about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, or, you know, one-point-one percent. Uh, which brings me to kind of the, the range at this point in the process where we are of a one-point-five to a two-point-two.
Very good. Now, you say you're going to have a more detailed presentation to your board next Tuesday?
So, the next steps in our process are, the, the things that were on this sheet, uh, our board has asked us to come back and really provide more background on, more detail on, so we're, we're creating presentations there. And then we have, uh, a meeting early in February that's on the docket, uh, which would be for some work that the board may define, questions or things they want me to come back, uh, and talk about. And then that second meeting in February is the meeting where I actually present what we call the superintendent's budget. So that's where I would come forward to the board with a number.
Have you done anything? I know you, you have some projects, initiatives where you're working with the Board of Selectment on some joint savings.
Yeah.
Has, have you factored any of that in yet, or are you still?
I have not factored that in to the numbers at all, but we've had some pretty positive conversations on, you know, a couple areas that we're looking at. One is, one is technology, in terms of shared services and things we could do there. Um, and as part of the conversation of insurance consolidation, which I think will be, you know, consolidation of carriers, potentially looking at the benefit side of the organization, is there a, some sort of seamless, you know, now that we have one carrier upstairs, downstairs, that we could look at a little bit differently? So I think, I don't want to speak for you, Mary, but I think we've had some early productive conversations, uh, on those two fronts.
Have you identified any other areas, or are those the primary areas you're working on now?
Maintenance as well. Burke's engaged with conversation with Tom Roy on the maintenance end.
Right.
But nothing quantifiable yet.
Sort of a two-part question. In terms of your process, you start with the current budget and start picking and pulling at it, pluses and minuses, that's appears to me what you're doing here. Or, um, I don't even know if they use the term anymore, the concept of zero-based budgeting, where you start from zero and you start adding in the top priority and start building the budget from the, really from the bottom up.
Yeah. The, the way it's structured is, we really work, it starts at the building level. So it starts with, you know, building-based principles, really taking a look at, you know, what you, what they spent last year on various areas that are building-related, looking at staffing, but also providing the building-level folks an opportunity to say, this is what we think we need to improve, this is what we think we need in terms of service delivery to get better at what we do. Um, this isn't a presentation of everything that came forward, certainly in the, in the building-level budgets. We try to really, and that's my role, Burke's role, think about the contextual factors, think about where we are, um, and then begin with more priorities like you talked about. Um, so, you know, my conversations early on with principals about when we're looking at staffing and we're looking at rolling our enrollment forward, we need to be within the guidelines. Anything outside of the guidelines, we'd be, we need to be, you know, okay with the fact that we need to present that upfront, not as a, uh, program cut, but as a reduction based on enrollment. We kind of started that conversation last year a little bit, and this is a consistent format with that.
Let's say, Matt, during this process, our board says, we appreciate this range, but let's say we, we have a vision of a different range, and we ask, challenge you to, to go back and let's say, look at a, a negative, a zero, and a one. What would you do there as far as the process?
I think we did do that last month.
How would you?
You asked me to, you said you would. I'm here to like to see if you do it.
Was this a quiz?
No, but let's say we did that, and formally did that, and, you know, we, we've been talking about it, but let's say we, how would you go about the budget process then, as far as looking at things and prioritizing?
Yeah. I think what we do is, we go back, we get with our principals, you know, who are our main building leaders, our program directors, and we sit and we, you know, we've taken many of the reductions I feel we can take, uh, outside of people, uh, in terms of equipment and looking at those things and trying to be responsible there. We've taken positions, uh, relative to enrollment, so it's not like I can come back and take another teaching position and be within the guidelines. I'm being honest and upfront about that. So it would have to be, uh, analysis of, first for us, positions that are outside of classroom positions, um, and really starting to, to Peter, quite honestly, make, make some tough decisions on a scenario list of, um, if we had to do without things, what would we do without, and what would be the impact? So for any position I would want to put on there, I would also put an impact statement. Uh, but it's a collaborative conversation, first with my administrators, but then with our board, you, you know, that, that our board, uh, would want to see that information as well, and how that conversation and direction comes from the board level.
I'm going to interject with that also, to, to do that, what Matt is saying, every year we go through the process, and this is what superintendent does bring forward on that, that cut, we call the cut list, of what are the potential cuts within your ranges, as you had mentioned, so we do have the opportunity to look at that and discuss it, what it is, when superintendent presents that.
When do, when does your board adopt the budget, Lydia? When's the?
End of February.
End of February.
Can you present to us?
March, March is the, the, we have some meetings where it can be adopted either one week early, or it could go as late as that first week of March.
Could I ask a question? I'm sort of new, and I just have a question about process of budget development, kind of along the lines of where Nick was heading. You know, having been both in state government and in, um, private sector, and seen many rounds of having to go through cuts myself, I know how painful the process is, and that it's really not easy to find chunks of stuff unless you have, um, a detailed and very intentional process for doing it. Uh, one of the things that a lot of the state agencies have started doing recently is the lean process, and certainly in the, in various corporate, uh, places I've worked, you know, we brought in McKinsey Groups, or Boston Consulting Group, those kinds of organizations to go through a process, reengineering kind of exercise. And it's amazing how much you can find when you have a very prescriptive process, you bring everybody in, you look at each process and procedure, each task, and it goes back to what Nick is saying, is kind of starting from zero. What's our mission? What's mission critical? What can we jettison that, you know, has been around for eighty years and we've just keep doing it, but it's no longer really mission critical because so much else has changed? Has anything like that been considered for?
We certainly have, uh, I mean, I'll go back, I think, five, six years ago, brought in, uh, District Management Council, who's a consulting firm. When we really looked at our overall, um, service delivery models in various areas, one of them was our reading intervention program, another was our special education program, and went through a very detailed review of comparative staffing levels, um, national data, local data, um, program improvements and reallocations. So we, we've done a lot on that front, and we've kept a lot of that close to how we, how we work. I think, uh, one thing to think about too is, you know, the average of a one-point-five percent increase, um, while I'm, I'm hearing what, what you're talking about, comparably has, is lean, uh, when you look at, um, what other Board of Eds are, are putting forward in terms of budgets. I don't, I don't have all that information up here today, um, that'll be part of a larger presentation, but, you know, certainly within the Farmington Valley, a one-point-five percent, um, outside of one town, uh, has been very, um, competitive. In terms of statewide, our budget last year was lower than, I think, eighty-six percent of the budgets that were approved, so.
Your budget increase.
Budget increase, correct.
Right, but starting from a higher base, so.
Percentage, maybe not base, but yeah.
Um, I, I just, I just want to, to put a fine point on it. Somebody had sent me, um, I guess you guys, and I applaud you for this, do a, a process of asking people in your, um, organization for, for input, and unfortunately, the print is so small, I can hardly make my eyes focus on it for very long, but there were a number of suggestions in here, and maybe you've already implemented some of them, but it's part of what made me start thinking about looking at, um, process improvements, and I'm just going to read you a couple of examples, um, and this was, these are input from teachers. Uh, a lot of paperwork is required, it's not efficient or effective, we're asked to complete agendas, data reporting, et cetera, that are never used. Um, another suggestion is change the PCI deadline, I have no idea what that is, to align with SMS data entry and thereby eliminate the need for an addendum. Um, a, a recommendation about eliminating a...
Linda, what is that? I don't even know what that is.
These are, it's from something a couple of years ago that was done soliciting input from teachers. And, and it almost doesn't matter, you know, the specifics, except that I think that there's, there's some feeling amongst, um, people that, you know, there might be opportunities, and that, uh, so I just want to suggest that, you know, we look collaboratively at, at how we can do that kind of process reengineering to, because I know it's not easy to find big chunks of savings. There are no silver bullets hanging around waiting to be fired, so.
And there is a certain element that I know the board has supported in the past, and certainly as superintendent and moving forward, my mission is to be as good a school system as we can be.
Should, of course.
That's my charge.
Yep.
So there's a certain element of my creativity of trying to improve the organization with a certain level of reinvestment, and that might be a place where we never see eye-to-eye. And, um, I think we've done very well by that the past several years to get to the one-five, and actually put ourselves in a position where I feel like we're pretty well poised for this reform, and this reform's a big deal, um, and how we're going to support teachers and support, uh, student learning, uh, moving into the future. So the things I talk about today aren't grand initiatives.
Right.
Um, their needs, I feel, are real, and, um, we're not opposed to having hard conversations and taking hard looks at things, for, for certain.
Okay.
Matt, I can maybe help. One question on the issue of some of the things you were reading, um, and are we, I guess we're on the record, Mike Coleman at, uh, Old Stone Gossing in Simbury. Um, as you know, I'm chair of the Personnel Negotiations Committee, and have been for the last three or four rounds of negotiations, and this, uh, and I think this is the material that you're reading from, this sort of gets to that question. We heard, in the negotiation process several times, we've heard from our faculty about the burden of paperwork and coordinating data reporting and all that sort of stuff. One thing I would point out is, a lot of that, uh, is part of mandates that we get from the state, that we're required to collect information and data and submit. But we've heard about it enough, and in fact, in the most recently concluded negotiation session, which ended at the end of October, just a couple months ago, uh, one of the good things that I think came out of that negotiation was an agreement between the school district and the, uh, the faculty, through the SEA, uh, to look at, to start a committee up, to look at exactly those issues. How can we better coordinate the collection of data, make better use of people's time, sort of reduce the paperwork burden, if that can even be done, but to work very closely with the SEA. It's a, it's a big concern, and, and we share it, but again, we're somewhat powerless. Anyway, we're, we're, we formed the committee, or we will form the committee under this agreement that we reached with them, and that committee will start work sometime over the next few months, but, you know, sort of our own version of the Paperwork Production Act, if you know.
Good.
But I think it'll be a good thing. It should pay off in, in some kind of, uh, some kind, a number of efficiencies.
Mike, and I, and I would add too, that I know the board has requested that we go back and try to put a little more, uh, of a descriptor as to what the cost of some of these mandates are.
Right.
So chiefly would be, right now, the assessment mandate, um, with the technology, the resources that go into even trying, the infrastructure to even get that off the ground. Uh, the second, quite honestly, would be, uh, the legislation around teacher evaluation, which has been a sweeping change, uh, in the amount of time, uh, needed to evaluate teachers. Um, and, you know, I know as enrollment goes down, we've fielded the questions about our administrative levels, and I can honestly tell you right now, I mean, they are taxed, uh, with the weight of some of this new work, uh, and we try to think very creatively about ensuring that they are mindful of the, the other aspects of, uh, what made our school system great, in addition to their, um, mandated responsibilities around evaluation. So that's ongoing work as well, um, that we'll present in, in future presentations.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other question, more, anything? Darb?
I have a second question.
Sure.
Before. Um, one of the things that, Sean, you handed this out, this, this table, that this came from Office of Policy and Management, you know, this data?
Yes.
Um, one of the things that I find a little distressing, Matt, is that, um, as I look down, uh, what, what this shows is the percentage of the budget that goes to education versus the percentage, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's going to all other things. There are eight towns here, um, not including Simsbury, Avon, Farmington, Glastonbury, Guilford, New Milford, uh, Newtown, Ridgefield, and South Windsor. Every one of these is in the sixty percent range. Uh, in fact, they all average sixty-four percent. For Simsbury, we're at seventy-two-point-one percent. So, you know, seventy-two cents of every dollar is going to the education budget for us, and everybody else, um, at least on this list, and I'm sure there are towns that are higher, but, but these are fairly comparable type, types of, uh, of school systems, I would think. And part of that, it seems to me, has got to be, and you mentioned just a moment ago, And part of that, it seems to me, has got to be, and you mentioned just a moment ago, is the administrative burden that we have in this. And I don't know if that's something that we've really tried to dig into and figure out. One, why are some of these other towns substantially, I mean, we're talking about eight points, percentage points below where we are. And we've heard in public hearings, public audience, last year and before, that there's concern about the administrative burden.
We look at our administrative, we had some data that looked at DIRG comparison of where we are. I don't think we're terribly out of line there, to be honest with you. When you look at it as a driver in contractual increases, it's $54,000. So, I mean, you eliminate one administrative position, often comes into question is the high school, because we added an assistant principal at Simsbury High School several years ago.
Do you know what year that was?
I don't know the year, but I know, Linda, that the enrollment was the same as it is now. It's very comparable to now, you know, it went up and now the enrollment's gone back down. So I can say in that example, the burden's very differently, different than it is now. Is there a time when we're going to have to have conversations about that as the place continues to go down? Yeah, but I don't know that that conversation's now.
Chris?
Yeah. Chris Kelly, Penn East Comstead. I just wanted to respond to that figure, because I put this data together, and I do think that that's the one metric where, when you look at us benchmark to other communities, we're higher. But you do have to keep in mind, and so the distinction that we're looking at is, you know, Simsbury Board of Ed being at 73.6 and the average being around 68. But there are four factors that contribute to that, and that figure's actually only looking at two. You know, one factor is what your general budget is, the second is what your Board of Ed budget is, the third is the average indebtedness for members of the community. Simsbury is actually 4% lower than the average. And then the other, which we don't have data on, is contribution to surplus every year. So when you look at Simsbury being spiked up, you know, about 3% to 5% over the average of the communities we looked at, you do have to factor in that's going to be tempered by indebtedness and contribution to surplus as well. But when you look at other factors, such as, you know, average pupil expenditure, et cetera, we tend to be, you know, at about the midpoint or lower than either our DIRG, Hartford community, the state overall.
We probably need to get our hands on that. I haven't even looked at this, I just got handed out, but just so we get a feel for, that's a good question as to why we jump out.
And I would ask Sean, who handed this out, how these towns were selected, because is this our DIRG? Is that what you picked here?
Actually, for this, we...
Why we're comparing to New Milford or Ridgefield?
Request for metrics, we asked CCM to, we asked CCM to use the, CCM did the research on this for us, so.
They picked the towns that they thought were comparable to us.
Yeah, I mean, I would tend to look more at the towns we're sort of competing against for residents and businesses.
As a first step, we asked them to take a look using the towns that they would, you know, sort of independently choose as most comparable to us statewide. We can come back with any comparables we want and ask them to bring up the numbers. That's not a problem. This was just sort of in response to the request for metric information, just sort of a first step.
Yeah.
Certainly can be as many requests as we want.
So because the administration question comes up continually, and we're in a tough year, where the board, I think you're hearing kind of a flavor for a lower increase this time around, would it be able to put to end the conversation that maybe we do have more administrators by doing some comps on, you know, vice principal, number of principal, vice principal in the different towns per pupil, or some sort of statistics where you can lay out the administrative to the pupil, administrative to teachers, information to other towns that would either, you know, support that we might have too many, or show, you know, we really are right in line with what other towns are doing. So that's information we haven't ever seen.
We have looked at that, again, Mike Holden, I've been on the board 12 years, and I can tell you, about every two years, we go through this. If you guys hear from members of the community that were top heavy on administration, we certainly hear that probably a lot more than you do. At least, we hear that comment. We have, as a board, we have instructed the administration every couple of years to do a survey of the DIRG towns, or towns in our DIRG, and try to come up with some comparables. One of the problems that we've always run into, going back as far as I can remember, is there are no defined rules around who ends up getting called an administrator, who ends up being called faculty. So what we have, without discouraging any of our fellow districts, what we have found is that there are people who really are fulfilling administrative roles but are still listed as faculty. So when we've tried to come up with an apples-to-apples comparison, we find that it just can't be done, because there's a lot of obfuscation that goes on. Now, Dave Holden, back in the days of Dave Holden, I think it's fair to say there were times when it was suggested that maybe that way of treating administrative costs is, if that's what everybody's doing, that's what everybody does. And Dave Holden has said, absolutely not, I won't get away with that. If they're doing administrative functions, we're going to list them on our books as administrators. So I think we are, as a district, far more transparent and far more upfront about putting costs or calling costs what they are. But when we have surveyed other districts, we have found that, you know, there are people, so we'll ask, well, don't you have somebody in that role? Well, yeah, we do. Why aren't they listed as administrator? Well, they're actually listed as faculty. How much do they teach? Well, not much. Well, why aren't they listed as administrator? Well, we choose to list them as faculty. So we just can't get good numbers. But I think suffice to say that in the overall analysis, we've been convinced that our administration is on par with what's done in other districts in the DIRG. And our overall costs, as Matt has described, are in line, if not lower than most districts in our DIRG, and, you know, that's sort of where we ended up. But there are no glaring and obvious differences in our administrative structure and those of other DIRGs. There are a few people here and there, but that's what we run into, how they're classified.
I mean, you look at, you look at our elementary school structure, I mean, we have one assistant principal between the five elementary schools housed at Squadron Line, which is a very large school. So, you know, when you start segmenting out function in school, there's not a great deal of individuals there. And we do know the biggest lever of improvement is the quality of the teaching in the classroom. We talk about that all the time as a district, and how we support that quality teaching is through strong leadership. And it's hard to find good people. And when we have the good people, we want to make sure that we're supporting them and we're in alignment with what we're doing. And I know, Mike, to your point, a couple of years ago at the board, we actually presented, we took the administrative positions and went position by position and presented out what the functions were to try to give people a better handle on the scope of the work that people were doing.
Maybe when you come back with your budget presentation, you could just expand upon that, just, because I'm sure the questions will always be raised.
Sure.
They've been around for quite a few years, and they're always raised, especially in time of declining enrollment.
Understood.
People, I think we have a responsibility to taxpayers to explain what's going on and articulate that argument, so.
No question, the board agrees with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'll also make mention on this in terms of that, and also in terms of the list that you have pressed out in here, what's not really identified on this list are the towns that we really are in, if you want to call them, in competition, as you so aluded to, Linda, report. The Wiltons, the Darians, the Westons, those districts that are really more comparable than we would have at South Windsor where we are. So if you look at their percentage, it would be where we are also. So also in terms of, going back to the administrative piece on that, you know, a lot of the drivers of this is going to be that county court, it's here, it's here to stay, it's implementation. And a lot of that, a lot of that burden will be coming down to the administrators.
I just think as we go through the budget process, we have to articulate this part of the argument more, because the taxpayers are open to explanation, and we got to make sure we thoroughly looked at it and explained it, so it's a good plausible story that everyone understands, however we compare. I mean, I've not even looked at this data that we have tonight, so
Right.
...it's important that we go through this exercise and ferret out all the issues to get good comparability and truly take a look. I think that'd be a fair statement to ask.
Yeah. A couple of comments. I just, just to clarify my terminology about competitor towns, I'm thinking of towns a lot closer to us, West Hartford, Glastonbury, Canton, Granby, Farmington, Avon. To me, those are our competitor towns. When somebody's thinking of moving to Simsbury, they're not going, geez, should I move to Simsbury or Wilton? They're too far apart.
Right.
So, you know, I think the towns that...
But your reference in achievement and how we line up, I think we're talking about two separate things.
Yeah, we're talking about different things. In terms of benchmarking, you know, for our focus at least, we're focused at benchmarking our tax level and our service level against towns that we compete against for residents and businesses. So I see that as kind of a different set. And the other thing I'd say, you know, I can tell you, having worked in the insurance industry, everything down, you know, in the quote "gold coast," like, you know, the Wilton towns, everything is 20% more expensive down there. I mean, you set premiums on any kind of insurance and it's going to, you just add a 20% markup, because everything down there is much more expensive. So I would also expect their budgets and their increases to be higher than ours. So I wouldn't benchmark us against them and say, hey, we're doing really well. If our budget is close to theirs, we're not doing well, because for this region, we should not be as high as those guys are down there. But I did, I did have a question, going back to the pages, Matt, that I had mentioned in the CAFR, and I don't know if you've had a chance to read through this with a fine-toothed comb, but Table 13 breaks down position counts over the last 10 fiscal years, and it breaks down the Board of Ed position count into certified and non-certified. Is that a distinction between teachers and non-teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, again, going back to look at, to my earlier comment, you know, sort of looking at this year compared to the year 2005, which was the peak of our enrollment, we went down 13.7% in enrollment, and the position count went from 639 FTEs, this is on page 97, to 649 FTEs last year, which is actually a 1.5% increase at a time when we had a 13.7% decrease in students. And in looking at the breakdown of certified and non-certified, during that, you know, time period, the number of certified positions actually went down four, and the non-certified went up 15. So if the non-certified are administrat, you know, administrators, we are seeing, I'm not saying it isn't necessary, but...
Are non-certified or not?
Okay, so that includes like janitors, you know, other...
That's non-certified.
Anybody that's not a teacher.
Her professionals, secretarial staff, maintenance staff.
But I think probably the thing that people are, would be most concerned about is wanting to make sure, you know, we have enough teachers for the students, and obviously, all the other support staff are...
Which I think is a listen to.
Maybe this would help, in the certified is both your admin
Yes.
...and the teachers.
Oh, cert, okay, so I just...
In certified, is that...
Certified is not just teachers, it's also administrators?
They have teacher certs, so I include them in there, yes. It's administrators and teachers.
Okay.
So maybe if they showed that, Dad, and they gave us like the last five years, how that's moved.
Certified is a Connecticut teaching certificate or administrative certificate.
Because I know they've had some initiatives where they eliminate some certified and put in a lot of paras.
Okay, misunderstood what you said earlier. So, non-certified would be...
Is that what happened? I know it's something James.
So, non-certified are paras and...
Paras, secretarial, maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
But if we had like a five-year breakdown, maybe up in the certified as far as admin versus teachers, maybe that would answer your questions.
Yep.
Chart like, non-certified, certified, admin? Sure.
Yeah, something like that, just to give a little more clarity to the issue.
That's usually part of the bigger presentation we show, but yeah.
All right, in essence, a time we spent a little bit more than we thought, but I thought the discussion was good. Any other points? I mean, you know, we're, we have to hear, you know, we have to be the sounding board for what we hear out there, so we have to vet this budget. So we're early in the process, so any concerns, get them on the table now, so people, when they go through the process, can adequately vet it out and do the right thing.
Peter, I think we need to give them clear direction since we didn't last time, as to what we would like them to take a look at, the possibilities, and come back to us with. So, we did talk about an actual decrease last time. I mean, I don't know whether we want to do that. I think we definitely want a zero increase and to see what that would do. I don't know where people are on...
I think after, in essence, we have another presentation. Later on, after that, we'll talk about both budgets, and, you know, this purpose was just to get a feel for what's going on with their budget, and then we'll, we can interject, have an opinion for a guideline, so we can talk about amongst ourselves, so we don't have to hold up everyone.
Okay.
And we can go through the other board, does that sound reasonable?
Sure.
So we'll make it clear what our guidelines are.
Yeah, that's fine. Chris Kelly did the right introduction to the next one. He said, "Everything else is so low, that's why Board of Ed looks as a high percentage." So we take care of our debt well, and obviously, on the other side, we're more efficient than everybody else, we must be, so. Is that a good segue to the Board of Selectmen?
Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
coming tonight, the volunteers on the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education for beginning the budget process early. Our goal is to get a budget before the voters of Simsbury in May, and starting early is always a good thing, and having this dialogue is really appreciated. First, want to thank Sean Kimball, he's doing a really terrific job as interim finance director, and sorry, he's not interested in the job, but we're happy to have him, and he's doing a great job. I also want to publicly thank Superintendent Matt Curtis and his staff for working so closely with the town of Simsbury and our staff. We have been reviewing their budget impacts and the town's budget impacts. We've also been reviewing capital plans, and we'll talk a little bit about those tonight. And so we're really grateful for the openness and the communication as well. We continue to explore cooperative regional efforts and intra-town efforts. We see a lot of opportunities to lay the groundwork for future cooperative measures, and we're really excited to bring those forward during the budget process. So we're still working through a lot of those areas, particularly in the technology area, and as Matt said, in the health benefit area. We're really grateful to the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen for laying the groundwork over the last several union negotiations, and certainly to our staff. We've worked toward a single carrier, and, which will make administration cooperative and easier. That took a long time to get here. We've actually had different, we have six contracts on the town side, and we're grateful to our staff and our employees for working in those negotiations toward a single carrier so that we can introduce and implement some of the cost-saving efforts that we think will be possible in next year's budget, but even more exciting in future budgets to come. Very quickly, we're very early on the budget process, so unlike the Board of Ed process, I will not receive the staff recommendations till the end of January, so January 31st is when I will receive those budgets. Staff is working very hard to get those done, and to us. It is a collaborative effort. It also is a bifurcated zero-based budget and program analysis, so we actually direct staff to look at programs and services they wish to continue, programs and services they recommend discontinuing, and highlight any new programs and services they would like to implement. While funding hasn't always been available, we really want to support our staff for looking at the best possible services and programs to our residents. So we're always very open to new programs, even though we can't fund all of them or some of them, but sometimes we can find programs that are no longer helpful or useful or being utilized, and we can sometimes substitute those new initiatives. Once the budgets are received in my office, I have until March 1st to submit those to the Board of Selectmen. We've actually tried to accommodate the Board of Selectmen members for the budget workshops, so I'll be submitting and presenting the budgets to the Board of Selectmen actually earlier than is required by charter. So the board will receive those budgets on February 27th. And then we'll finally review those through a number of workshops and present our recommended budgets to you on Tuesday, March 25th. So let me just walk through some of our budget goals, and again, this is how we start our process. We've implemented a program-based budget, so all of our departments are, we're putting forward goals for each of their service areas. We are analyzing drivers of our budget right now. We are looking at our budget history. We've done an analysis of where your tax dollars go, because obviously, there can be some manipulation of mill rates, and the actual question is, what is the tax dollars that our residents pay? We're looking at some cost-saving efforts, and we've put together a budget checklist, all of the things that we consider in bringing forward a budget, and we thought that might be helpful for some of our new members to our board. So what are our budget goals? We start with the budget process, certainly by looking at our core service, and that's provide public health and safety to our residents. We always look at providing quality services at affordable costs, so we utilize Connecticut Conference of Municipalities on a regular basis. That's a service that we use, that you've seen tonight, where we can compare and benchmark Simsbury services and costs with other towns. We feel it's really important to maintain our status as recognized, not only within our own community, but our rankings, that we've been recognized both statewide and nationally as number one in Hartford Magazine's list of top towns, and certainly national ranking of 39 on the country. So we feel that only validates the services we're providing to our residents, but also makes us a very attractive economic development place to locate when businesses... but also makes us a very attractive economic development place to locate when businesses or residents look to locate their business or their homes. Some of the pressures on our budget, as you heard earlier, are the same pressures on the town side, show up also on the education side, our health insurance costs, and we don't have any estimates to report tonight, our pension costs, and even though we've fully funded our pension plans, unlike some other communities in the state, even our investment returns have resulted in our pension plans not being as robust as we had hoped, but we are fully funding and continue to recommend fully funding. We consider our contract settlements, and our utilities and materials, our OPEB funding, and one of the big increases we saw last year on the town side was increased funding to our Farmington Valley Health District. There were some lack of inspections, a lack of numbers of inspectors, so we are part of a health district, and we saw a big spike in that area. Besides the expenditure side, we also look very closely at the revenue side. We don't have any grand list numbers to report tonight, but we certainly can anticipate it will remain stagnant or grow a little. We're waiting to see what that, what those numbers are. The car tax elimination always looms on the horizon as a possibility. We know it's a favorite of the speakers, and we're not sure it will be mentioned in the governor's recommendation to legislature on February 5th, but we are keeping a close eye on that. Car tax elimination legislation, and how that will impact the town revenues. We always look at the state aid reductions. We know those have a big impact, mostly on the education side, because the town basically, other than our road funding, gets very little funding from the state. And we continue to work very closely with Hartford on their timeframe. We will report at the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday night that the Hartford is extending its timeframe, its commitment to the town for, at least through 2015. So that should let us all breathe a sigh of relief, that for the next budget cycle, you can continue to budget for the revenue that we receive from the Hartford. So that is good news, and we'll report that to the Board on Monday, but they have made that commitment, and we're grateful to the Hartford for giving us that predictability through the next fiscal year.
Mary, can I just interrupt you for a second? They still have the big-for-sale sign out there. What happens if they find someone to sell the building to? Not that I expect they would.
Yeah, so we actually got a meeting this week on timeframes, because the timeframe of what they do is important to what we do. It's about $120 per taxpayer if they were to shut down and pay no taxes, which wouldn't happen, but if that's the worst-case scenario. They're in the process of renovating their Hartford facility, so they're actually moving more employees out to Simsbury. So we're going to be seeing a spike of about 2,000, up to about 2,000 employees at the Simsbury campus, and that will continue through 2015. In the interim, if there is a buyer, that will be also good news for us, because they will vacate while a new business comes in. So again, the continuity of the tax dollars will remain, but they don't anticipate any changes through fiscal year 2015. Just to give you some context, you've seen this slide before. You know, I want to commend the town, and the staff, and the employees for really creatively and working hard regionally and attracting a significant amount of grants to enable us to present this slide. I think this is a historically significant picture. You'll see the drop in 2010 was mostly because of the, not only wage freeze that the employees gave, but also givebacks in a number of areas. So, as you can see, we've had a historically low, significantly stable budget on the town side for the last six years. This is the, overall, the taxpayers don't see the town budget, they see a tax bill. So our tax, this slide is designed to show you what the overall tax situation and cost to our taxpayers has been, because it shows you how the budgets are increasing and decreasing, and what those increases and decreases have been allocated to. If you'll notice, the green color is the Board of Selectmen town side of the budget. We control 25 percent, basically, of the overall tax dollars. So when someone pays their taxes, 25 cents of every dollar comes to the town. There is a perception out there that, you know, the town controls the entire budget, but as you can see, and I know that those of you who've served on our boards know, that the town is only a really small portion. What we did is we...
Mary, sorry. What does NPS stand for on the...
Non-public Schools.
Non-public Schools. Oh, okay, thank you.
So that's a separate budget item.
Teeny.
The next slide shows you how our mill rate breaks down. Again, the town of the 38.51 mill rate that the town sends out tax bills for, this includes a 1.22 mill rate for the fire district. Of the total mill rate, the town portion is about 7.6 mills of the overall mill rate. So you can see how this breaks down in terms of you were looking at applying, utilizing the mill rate distribution numbers. You recall, you've seen this before. This is a median net taxable assessment that we ask our assessor every year to provide. Based on the years 2007 to 2008, 11 grand lists, the median net taxable assessment of a single average home value in Simsbury was 231,000, which means the average home value was about 330,000. Our previous mill rate was 32.40. Using that mill rate, the median tax bill, and that's, the median means that there's same number below and same number above, but the median tax bill in Simsbury was approximately $7,484. So that was the impact to our taxpayers. We asked the assessor to provide the same analysis after the 2013, 2012 revaluation. No surprises, the value of homes decreased, we saw that. So the median net taxable assessment of 194,000 meant that based on an average home value was approximately $277,000. So we asked, what does that mean with the new mill rate that the Board of Finance set of 38.51? Well, interestingly enough, the taxpayers in Simsbury last year paid less than they had previously.
On their home.
$7,471. So, you know, sometimes mill rates can be manipulated, and they can be, create a misconception or provide misinformation. So what we've tried to do is look at the median tax bill that the average, or the median taxpayers paying, and our assessor shows that, you know, the mill rate was adjusted accordingly to the revale. Other towns that have a lower mill rate, Avon, for example, will be experiencing revale this year. So you're going to see the same adjustment in Avon that we had this year, after our revale, that our mill rate went up, but the median tax bill stayed the same. Avon's mill rate currently is lower. They'll be going through revale. You'll see their mill rate will spike as well, and be comparable to Simsbury's. So just wanted to address the mill rate misperception out there. We then broke down, based on the amount of the town services. If you're paying an average or a median, I want to make sure I use my right terms, if you're paying a median tax bill of $7,471 last year, $1,473 of it went to town services. And then you see the breakdown of where the other dollars were allocated. We did also an analysis of the monthly tax bills, because sometimes it's easier for folks to understand on a month-to-month basis the allocation. The median tax bill is approx, is about exactly $623 a month. We did the same analysis, and the taxpayer, in this case, on a monthly basis, would pay $123 a month for the town services. Because the town has really kept our budget either reduced or at the same level as we had six years, we did an analysis of the median monthly tax bill over the last nine years, and you can actually see that the monthly tax bill has basically stayed flat since 2009 on the town side. So, which is not a surprise when you look at the significant reduction in the town's budget, and are hovering close to zero for the last six years. So this is probably historically unprecedented, that the town has been able to control the costs on the town side. You can see, last year, even with revale, the number stays the same. We were actually surprised, because there was a lot of conversation about the mill rate going up, so that must mean the taxpayers paid more. Well, actually, that's just not true. They didn't pay more. The median tax bill remained the same. We'll just go through basically what our services have been, and what we currently fund, and this is the same information. It's not been updated for this current budget, because we don't have those budget information yet, but we have 33, 35 sworn officers, and we have 30,000 police calls. Our road paving and maintenance, we have 164 miles of roadway, 3,850 catch basins, 20 miles of road resurfacing, nine miles of crack sale every year, and 92 crosswalks repainted. Our snow removal, we have 18 highway department personnel and 12 plow trucks. We'll use this information as we provide our budget analysis for next year. Library, we currently are very user-friendly. We have, as you can see, 477,650 items circulated. We track our number of borrowers, patrons, and the amount of traffic that we get in our library. On our town hall services, you'll see, I expect to see a big increase. We have a lot of economic development projects in the pipeline. I anticipate that we will see this number spike. We've already seen, as you may have heard, the marriage licenses issued a spike, and our town clerk is offering a Valentine's Day special, so if you know of anyone who wants to get married in Simsbury, we have a real treat in line for them. Our engineering and capital project services, we have nine capital projects, managed value of 8.2 million, and we currently manage a grant portfolio of 3.8 million. We have a very wonderful staff that finds all kinds of grants for all kinds of things, which has enabled us to subsidize our town budget over the last six years. No surprise that our needs in our emergency response area have increased. We've gotten really good at responding to emergency disasters. We have an increased number of folks who have already registered on our Simsbury Alert and CT Alert system. We have, thanks to Sean's efforts, have storm-related tweets, and we have issued, unfortunately, 64 storm-related public information notices in the last two years. Another area that you're familiar with is our parks, pools, and recreational services. 30 percent of our town is currently designated as open space. That is a lot of space to manage. We're currently looking at a long-term open space maintenance plan. We have town-owned parks, playing fields, aquatic areas, pools, and of course, Simsbury Farms. And we're analyzing, in presentation to you, our budget for Simsbury Farms Revenue Fund to present during the budget process. We also have social service needs and senior center needs in our community. We track our dialer ride passengers. We track our requests for social services. We also track the number of programs and classes that we offer. We are also very fortunate in our community to be subsidized by the community, and a lot of the needs of those in our own backyard are not met by tax dollars. With tax dollars, they're met with private contributions. Those in a fund that we have set up, which is a state accounts, donations through probate, and also very generous donations through businesses and individuals. So this is just a summary of our department by department.
Sorry, Mary, can you, sorry to interrupt. Can you just go back to the last statistic there, the 972 classes? 972 classes?
I think they're counting classes, like everyday classes.
Okay, all right.
Not 972 different ones, right.
All right. So there's, so there's a daily class at this...
That's right.
Obviously, you haven't been there once.
You should go.
So it's more like sessions, yeah.
And they're all fitness classes?
Pardon me?
They're all fitness classes? That's three fitness classes a day?
That's probably about right. There's yoga, and exercise, and, come on down, we'll give you a tour. We have so, we have so much information we can provide you, so just let us know. Just to move quickly, we did a monthly breakdown on the town budget, so as you saw between department budgets. You can see very quickly that the biggest portion of our budget is certainly public safety. We're open 24 hours a day, respond to calls 24 hours a day. We're always working to protect the public healthy of our, safe, public health and safety of our residents, so we have certainly the largest budget. Public Works is second, and then you can see our impact for health insurance and benefits make up the bulk of our costs as well. If you look at a 10-year budget comparison, you can see that the net differences from 2009, I'll focus your attention on the 2009 to 2014, town budget increased $14,966. So you can see, that was really not, not much of an increase over the last few years, and that's enabled, I think, us to work together to present a lot of services at not a lot of cost on the town side. For your guidelines to give some for the historical perspective, 2004, 2009, we did have big budget increases, which shows the difference over the last few years. We are always working on being more efficient and finding ways to save money. A big area, as I mentioned before, is in our grant applications. We have converted a lot of our key staff, not key staff, but our staff, paid staff positions to volunteer positions. The most obvious one is our reception area. We're really fortunate to have a number of volunteers come in every day, and direct residents with no cost to the town, so we're really pleased about the involvement of our volunteers. The retiree health plans, which that we implemented last year, has saved us about $240,000. And again, thanks to Sean and Tom Cook for implementing that with our retirees. It was a difficult process, because we had a lot of retirees that were worried about the changes, how their benefits would work, and we had a number of forums and question-and-answer sessions, and rolled out that change very effortlessly.
Was that in this budget year, or?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Okay, so we've seen the savings in this budget?
Yeah. Can I, so that, that position used to actually be a paid position?
Full-time paid position with benefits.
Oh, well, good job.
Well, thanks to our, we had, we didn't know how it worked.
The people who volunteered seemed to enjoy it.
They do, and you know, our unions agreed to it.
Provide a real service.
Because it was a union position, so we worked with the unions and said, well, if we can save money in that position, we can reallocate it to other areas, and so we were contractually able to do it. We put out a call for help, and people responded, and we, it's really been great. We just celebrated one of our volunteers' 90th birthdays, so we're really, really enjoying it. I think it's been a good experience for a lot of our volunteers, our elderly who want, are still vibrant and vital, and want to be part of something, and they enjoy being with us, and we enjoy having them here. So it really worked. One of the areas that we really try to move forward is technology. We're working closely with the Board of Ed on technology improvements. We have a long way to go, because the infrastructure's not in place to allow us to utilize some of the efficiencies we'd like to. One area that we have seen some successes in encouraging folks to use our online tax payment. As a result, we were able to eliminate a full-time position and hire two part-time positions and eliminate our summer staffing levels. So this is a significant area where we've had savings and tremendous opportunity for further efficiencies, once we implement some of the technology needs. We also are working on the energy savings areas, and Tom Roy's taking the lead on this, in making sure that all our buildings are energy-efficient, replacing things that need to be replaced, and working on solar and electric opportunities as they arise. We'll see some of those going forward as well. Just to summarize some of the things that, whether you're a volunteer on the Board of Ed, the Board of Selectmen, or the Board of Finance, we're all looking at the same thing. What impact will our contractual wage increases have on next year's budget? What will the benefit costs be, and how will they implement, affect our budget? What are the department heads, our professional staff, recommending that we need to do for their departments to operate efficiently and to serve the needs of our residents? What are the town technology needs? That's an area through the volunteers on the Town Technology Task Force, and I want to thank Lisa for her assistance on that as well. We'll be getting some of their recommendations, and again, these are folks who are in private sector technology areas, and their expertise is, we couldn't pay for. I mean, they've, they've really done a great job, and we'll be bringing forward some of those recommendations. What's happened to the grand list? Is it... Is it, is it down? I think we're seeing it, it's not, it's not going to decrease, so that's good news. Will it remain stable, or will it increase a little bit to give us some reading room? We'll, we'll know shortly. What are the state aid projections? We'll eagerly await the governor's report to the General Assembly, and we'll use those numbers as a basis for our discussions going forward. What are our revenue estimates? All the department heads right now are not only looking at the expenditure side, but the revenue side, so we're anticipating, particularly in the land use area where we've really made good stride on bringing some new business initiatives online. Some of the new development will come online in this fiscal year, so you'll be seeing a lot of those revenue estimates increasing. We are monitoring very closely the tax appeal settlements, because obviously that will impact the amount of revenue that we can anticipate in our collections. We believe we settled most of those cases, so we have a good handle on what we will anticipate going forward. Interestingly enough, for a revaluation year, we have not had a significant amount of tax appeals. In, in years past, when you had a revale, you oftentimes wouldn't know what that number would look like, because a lot of folks would come and we'd be in court for a long time. But now, this grand list, this revale process went very smoothly. We didn't have a lot of tax appeals. Folks were very comfortable with the amount that we, and felt that the amount that the assessor put on was fair, and we'll have a good handle on that. Finally, collection rate, we continue to monitor that, the debt level, what that will be, the capital improvement plans, which we're currently working on, which we can update you on tonight, and the capital non-recurring needs. Those will all be, all on our budget checklist that we can look, look forward to having a discussion about. Finally, we've set the budget workshop dates. We've moved up the timeframe, which should give the Board of Finance more time to talk to us. We will have our first budget meeting February twenty-seventh, and hopefully our last budget meeting on March eleventh, but you never know. And then we'll be ready to present the Board of Selectmen's budget on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do you have any early indications of a range that you think your department heads are coming in with?
I have no idea. I have no idea. I think, I think part of what we've asked them to do is, again, you know, we've held the line. I think the fact that they can come in with zero budgets, I think, will be difficult because there's not a lot of opportunities to hold the line. With increasing contract costs, all of our contracts are settled, except for the police. We're going into negotiations with them, but, so those are fixed costs, so, you know, personnel is the bigger, biggest part of our budget, but we'll see. So it's too early to tell, but everyone's keeping the numbers very close to the vest right now. And we, we're not discouraging them from bringing forward new initiatives or programs that they feel the public needs or should have. We may not fund them, but we don't want to discourage creativity, and we want to support them if it's something that the taxpayers feel that, that they, they want to provide.
Mary, in one of your early slides on pressures on the town budget, you mentioned the Farmington Valley Health District. I'm, I'm confused. What's, what's driving our cost there?
So we are per capita town. We participate with the Farmington Valley Health District, and they set a per capita assessment. When Rick Matheny retired, Jennifer Katanas went in and was the new director and did a benchmarking of the number of inspections, the time for inspections, took a look at what the Farmington Health District provides, some of the new stresses on health districts. And last year, the towns agreed to increase the assessment. I don't have the number in front of us, but it was pretty significant. It was a pretty significant increase. In fact, it was probably one of our biggest, biggest line item increases in the entire budget. But they felt it was necessary to provide the, the level of protection to our residents, and, and we accepted that increase, but that, that is, that's now built in.
I didn't realize it was per capita.
Yeah.
So Mary, can I kind of go back to what Peter was asking? One of the reasons we wanted to do this is we understand now on the Board of Ed's side, they've got a million dollars or so, which is over a percent coming in, just contractually obligated increases that, you know, if we ask for zero, they've got offset. That's the same kind of information we need to make a recommendation on your side.
Right.
You've noted contract settlements. What, what is that worth as a percent of your budget?
Again, as I said, so those numbers will come in on January thirty-first. Those are the numbers that we're running now. We're trying to figure out, because the, last year, the contracts were settled, but the budget base was the old contracts, and then the money was transferred from contingency into those accounts, so we don't, it's not as easy to say, well, it's, so I will know after January thirty-first, but as, again, we're not as far ahead as the Board of Ed in their budget process. Superintendent's already had that preliminary information in order to share with the Board of Ed. I don't even have that from town staff yet, and I have not had a chance to share it with the Board of Selectmen, so I know you're looking for some help, Barbara, and I, you know, we wrestled, you know, before tonight's meeting to see what we could give you, but we didn't feel comfortable.
What percent of your budget is personnel?
Jesus, like eighty percent.
It's got to be three quarters of eighty.
Yeah.
Seventy-five to eighty.
I mean, most, that's about all we have.
You know what the contract settlements have been? You got to have, of course, then you don't know the number of positions, and, so you could have positions different and staff and all that, yeah.
I mean, I might be able to get some numbers after the thirty-first, but tonight, we're not prepared to answer that.
Do you have any sense what's happening or what's going to be happening with Simsbury Farms?
Yeah, they're going to be looking for more money. That's what I, that's what I think.
That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, we, um.
I mean, am I correct that they ran a fairly significant deficit?
Yes.
I mean, that.
They ran a deficit. So at, after last fiscal year, we directed Jerry to do a survey of other towns to determine what the staffing levels, what the programs, he's done that. He has a, he's been meeting with the complex committee and the Simsbury Farms Committee, and they're looking at some numbers. So we're aware that we're going to need to look closely at that budget, and I think one of the recommendations coming forward preliminarily will be that they, they would like to recommend that town staff, we've gone to a, a allocation of staff to the program and services they serve. So for example, in the Water Pollution Control Authority, we've allocated the staffing to the users of that facility, so that, they pay for staffing and salaries. We did the same with Simsbury Farms. We allocated the amount of time that Jerry's time is spent on Simsbury Farms versus other parts of his budget. We've allocated that percentage now for the last few years. I think one of the recommendations will be to reallocate that back to the general fund budget, instead of assessing it to Simsbury Farms, which will provide relief to Simsbury Farms, but provide more pressure on the town. So I think that will be part of the recommendation.
How much should we allocate, do you know, twenty to two?
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy percent to Simsbury Farms, and I, I did see that, and I thought, well, seventy percent of Jerry's time is spent on Simsbury Farms?
No, I mean dollars, do you know, any idea of dollars that was allocated?
And, and his staff. That just struck me as kind of high, given that he has a lot of other parks and.
Well, that's, and that's the, the process that we're going through now, trying to have Jerry allocate the amount of time him and his staff provide to each function.
Function, yeah.
And then, in a fair assessment, allocate those dollars to the function. But that's, it's not going to solve the complete problem, so we're looking at other, other options, other costs. But we do have some data from the other towns' surveys that we've done with other towns, other programs.
Do the others, do the surveys of the other towns also look at what the fees are that are charged? Because I'm a big believer in user fees, and, you know, as long as we're within sort of market rates for court time, ice time, et cetera, then, you know, rather than having all the taxpayers pay for it, the people who are skating or the people who are playing tennis, me being one of them, ought to bear the cost for that.
The commission looks at that annually.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if the Parks and Rec looks at it, we are looking at it internally. We, that's why I said in the beginning that staff is directed to look at the revenue side as well as the expenditure side.
Pumps with other towns, okay.
So we don't want staff coming in and saying, you know, increase, decrease my budget here, but then we'll have a comparable decrease in the revenues. We have to know how those two pieces work together.
Right.
So Jerry's been tasked with making a recommendation for his budget for next fiscal year, and I know he's working very hard on that, and it's a matter of a while to do that.
One thing we're going to have to do is there's a cumulative deficit, about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, so we're going to probably have to make a transfer to make that fund right side up, so we'll make it whole, but that, we have enough in reserves to do that, but it's appropriate time we're going to have to do that transfer. But this is an ongoing thing with Simsbury Farms, you know, we've put half a debt in, we've had no debt, some debt, you know, we, we, about every year, we've done something. We can't get it to make profit, a couple of years it has, so I think a continuous look is.
We have a little bit of a problem because of the way the fiscal year works. So if you have a bad spring but a, a good summer, that, the bad spring will show up on the fiscal year, but the good summer won't show up till the next fiscal year. So there's a little bit of a, a timing issue for those, because they're busy, the season is the summer, it's split between two fiscal years, but we're trying to wrestle with how we account for that.
When you're looking at, well, I guess, the revenue side and the expenditure side, will you be able to break it down? I think it would be probably helpful for this board to see which parts of the farms are.
Right, yeah, I understand the golf.
Are expenditure have, are draining the revenues that are coming in? Because I think.
Golf is making money.
Right, but it's very expensive to run a pool and ice time. So I think it would be helpful to the residents and to this board also to see where the, how those numbers are allocated within that budget.
Yeah, and you're, and more, you've seen the stuff more than you probably are happy about, but we do have the breakdowns on the programs, services, ring times. One of the other, one of the problems last year is, it was a bad spring, so the golf, you know, function was affected, but also the skating is down, and the ring time is down. So you had, you know, some losses on the revenue side, both during the winter and during the spring, and so that had a significant impact on, on the Revenue Fund. But, that being said, that's the nature of the business, and so we need to anticipate how we're going to respond and adjust to some of those difficulties.
One other thing, Mary, we talked about it fall or something, and Tom Roy came in, did a great presentation on the roads, on the road budget. I know we were chatting about, I guess, the road budget's kind of in, in operating to a little bit in capital non-recurring, you know, LOSE kind of runs through there, and then every once in a while it pops up in capital as a capital request. We're trying to say, how do we get a more consistent approach to the roads, and I guess we never quite got the two groups together to kind of chat about it, but I think, you know, I'm not sure it's going to be a short-term discussion, but long-term, we should get together and try to figure out a consistent way to, to do the roads, so maybe it goes in a smoother budgeting process. I'm not sure what that smoother process is.
I think it's, again, it's all policy decision. I think when the Board of Selectmen gets a chance to see the public works budget, there'll be some policy decisions that are made, how, how many miles of road we resurface, what condition we resurface, what our LOSE state funding is. Last year it went up, so that meant that we had more funding for roads without, without adding that to the general fund, so we didn't want to add to the general fund the difference since we were getting it from the state. We have a, the road, transportation road funds that are in our probate trust funds, so that's a factor as well. So it is a complicated system to put together, but certainly, you know, making the policy, it does.
Comes from a lot of places, and, you know, and then it's in the capital, and so we're looking at bonding and balancing the capital needs. So, you know, we did it, I, I equate it to like with the school buses once from the Board of Ed, we kind of looked at everything and came up with a good plan. Here's the way we're going to feather it into the budget. I'm not sure how it's going to bear out, but just, we look at it and get a consistent way, and.
Yeah, I think Tom will bring forward in his budget the number of roads that he thinks, in his professional opinion, should be addressed on what the cost is and how it's currently funded, and then we can make some policy.
Yeah, he made a presentation like a million, two, we got to spend or something. So we, you know, we deal in numbers here, and so we just.
Well, he'll always take more money if you give it to him.
I know.
So Mary, that wasn't really the goal. Instead, it was.
That's what he told me when he came back.
Yeah, no, that wasn't the goal. The goal was, should the town be borrowing money for our roads and paying interest to, you know, third parties and the bonding fees and all the associated fees and borrowing money, or can we come up with a plan like we did for the schools so we can level it out and so that we don't hit, you know, three years from now, whatever the timeframe is, that we have to borrow money again?
And I appreciate that, and I get that. I just, there is a policy decision that the age of a road, the lifespan of a road as well, because you can get into a problem where you overtax, and the taxpayers who are here now are paying the full boat to renovate roads that are going to be here thirty years. So there is some sense to bonding some of the roads because that, that spreads out the cost to taxpayers, not only who are here today, but also taxpayers who are going to use the roads tomorrow. So again, it gets back to a philosophical policy.
Right, now if you can flatten it, it's, it's a concept we want to talk about, which is the same as the school buses. You know, you have to spend on roads every year. Is there a way to come up with a plan that we keep it pretty flat, so we're not charging it? Because when you borrow money, you're also giving it to future people, right? And what we're saying is, instead, let's just pay a level amount every year so that you don't have to borrow money and make the future pay for today.
I think the solution is, we just got to group together long-term, try to work something out, and, and work it into budgets, and I think if we get a couple people from our board and meet with their board, a couple members, if you want to get a committee, and just kind of talk about it with Mr. Roy heading it up, that would be great.
Yeah, but I'd ask, I'll ask Tom to present a recommendation based on this year's budget and also a funding mechanism, and then we certainly could have that as a conversation.
All right, now as far as on the capital, the five-year, the capital plan, so that's going to come to us when?
So we, we actually.
You have a draft?
The Board of Ed and the Board of, not the Board of Ed Superintendent and the Finance Director and I have worked on some scenarios based on the capital plan. Again, the boards have not seen this yet because it's not ready. So what we did was, we gave PFM the latest recommendation of our capital plan with the known changes that we know so far. So we made the adjustments that we know as of today. Now, there may be further discussions, because again, we haven't received the department request. So I'm just prefacing that this is really just a draft, but the exercise is important because we took the draft, we met with PFM several times, had many conversations, and asked them to help us meet our goals, presenting a capital improvement plan that meets the seven percent debt level that the Board of Finance has set as a policy goal, and also meets the needs of the town, as seen as of today from staff recommendations on both the town side and the education side. And we have the results of that exercise. So we thought we'd just present that exercise to you. We don't anticipate a lot of conversation tonight because we're not frankly ready to talk about the projects, but I think the exercise will be helpful to you so that you, you can invite PFM back when you're ready to talk about capital plan, once we agree on what the capital needs are, and then you will have access to PFM to ask the very questions that we asked as a preliminary effort to get here tonight. We knew you wouldn't have time tonight to have PFM come. They did offer to come and go through a whole presentation, and we saved you and spared you, because I know it's an important conversation, and we didn't want to rush it, and it was unfair to, to have that conversation before everybody has seen the full picture. So I'll just ask Sean to basically just walk through the exercise, give you a copy of what we know as of today, what the analysis resulted in, and then, and then we'll take questions and be happy to set up further discussion.
I can drive, yeah? Be available in case.
Yeah, I'll just pull up the PFM slides. I think I ought to be able to walk through.
I'm not sure how to read.
Well, I think the key, the key thing is, I mean, I don't think we're going to be going out looking at the longer years at this point till we digest really what's happening for fiscal year two, twenty fifteen.
See, that's not there, because you've never done it before. I think it's just as important.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think we'll do that later.
All right, so I'm just going to try to walk you through this presentation that PFM gave to us. I probably won't do quite the job that PFM would do, but we're just going to kind of walk through the analysis that we had them provide, based on the CIP that you're holding now, again, draft version, and really a draft version as of two weeks ago. Again, this is a living document, it's a moving document a little bit, in terms of some of these projects and the exact dollar amounts, especially in some of these future years. But we asked PFM to go ahead and do an analysis, well, first of all, what the market's been doing. I think everyone knows interest rates have been going up. The Fed has been announcing the tapering will likely begin this current calendar year. You have a couple of yield curves there, so you can see, you know, if you look where roughly ten years would be, right between the nine and eleven, they're in very fine print. You know, last year, we were looking at an interest rate somewhere closer to one and a half to two. Now you're looking at, for a ten-year, closer to three, between two and a half and three. So rates are certainly going up. There's your yield curve. There's your yield curves there. So it's a dramatic change from where we were last year. We know, we knew last year was historic. We are still at pretty historically low rates, just not quite as historically historic as we were last year, I guess. And, that's a technical term. Quote me on that one. So this graph, I think, is actually, and I hope you can see, the shading isn't great, but we've been talking about how, where we are in terms of the current year. Obviously, the current FY '14 budget that's already passed, that we're living in right now, we will write just a hair under that 7% guideline you see there by $5,000. Looking out next year, you know, we have about $200,000, again, in debt service capacity. We walked through this last month when we talked about it. I just think this visual was nice that they prepared, and it really shows how some of the debt falls off. Again, the high school, I believe, falls off there in '18 to '19. So you start to see some pretty dramatic capacity changes. Again, this is assuming, and we'll get into this a little bit, an assumption of a one and a half, one and a quarter percent total budget growth. Obviously, as our budget, if our budget increases at a different percent, that's going to affect what our 7% debt capacity is, right? So, or sorry, debt limit is. These are just the numbers, I won't get into, these are the numbers that make up that previous chart. Another chart where they just showed it at 1%, we were discussing with them whether to assume a 1% budget increase or a one and a quarter. Maybe it sounds like a nuance there, but we just, it does affect whether certain projects fit in future years, so we're starting to kind of just get a feel for what one or one and a quarter would look like. We still feel like that's pretty conservative. And so, going forward, so with all the current projects we have out there and those that are authorized but unissued, if you recall, last year, I, last year, last year, last month, I gave you a sheet that showed the 3.7 million of authorized that we haven't issued yet. What they're assuming here, their assumption would be, we would issue that debt in 2014. Again, first, payment would be due, and they can structure these in different ways, we discussed that last time, payment would be due in FY '15, so that's the budget we're planning for. In order to fund all those projects you see on that draft CIP, these are the issuances, five, 15, 11, five million that we would need in the future. Sticking to the 10-year restriction and the 7% guidelines, those projects, especially the larger ones, and we'll kind of focus on what's Henry James, Latimer Lane, and the Senior Center, would not fit in under that 7% guideline. What they've done for us is kind of give us a couple of options, and they'll be, sorry, it's PDF, there we go, two different plans of how we could keep, based on their analysis of our CIP as we gave it to them a couple weeks ago, how we could fit all these projects that the town and board would like to do, town and Board of Ed would like to do. Their analysis resulted in sort of option A here, where we stick to the 10-year guide, the 10-year limit, except for one project, the Henry James Middle School, which I believe we have there is five and a half million, I think that's, you know, net of reimbursement from the state, but it's a nine, what is it, a $9 million roughly, right, project. You know, we strongly feel, both that project and also Senior Center, and for that matter, Latimer Lane, that it's certainly in this scenario, it is justified to have something more than 10 years, when the idea is that this project's going to, this building and this renovation will last much longer than 10 years. Certainly with the Senior Center, if it was a brand-new construction, you'd be, again, hoping that building lasts a lot longer than 10 years and that it's only fair and equitable for more to spread that over 15 years rather than 10, if it means, you know, getting the projects that the town wants done. So sort of option A, though, requires keeping Senior Center there in FY '16 on the schedule, but moving Latimer Lane out, I believe, one year to FY '18, moving Henry James out to FY '17, but again, 15-year amortization. The reason, and this is, this next chart will be assuming a one and a quarter percent budget increase. Hold on.
So can I just interject a question? This was, you said the Superintendent and you, so did the Superintendent agree that the Senior Center takes priority over Henry James, and Henry James should slide?
We are, we felt comfortable that that was an option that we would look at right now and see how that would be funded, but there was, I won't pick the Board of Ed.
Yeah, I was part of the staff meeting, and we've done this, you know, as a matter, of course, have this admin-level review, in part because we're trying to look at the 7% guideline and bring it back here. So our board on the, on Tuesday night will get this update. They, we took the draft that our board had seen, so all of the projects are there in that, and that includes bringing a portion of the Henry James project forward, which would include moving the main office for security reasons, as well as some maintenance of the first floor, basically, which is, which is a breakout. And what is different, and what they'll see in their packets, which went out today, is that these two projects would be proposed and move out one, one year each in order to fit under this 7% guideline. So Matt and I will be recommending to the Board of Ed that that is a reasonable thing to do, given that some work at Henry James gets funded in this, in this plan in the first year, the six years ahead.
So against this question, Barbara, we, we could sit here and recommend projects that don't go, and we didn't think that was valuable of your time, our time, of the needs of the community. So what we tried to do is have a lot of, a lot of meetings, a lot of time devoted to an analysis of what projects were ready to go, when they would be ready to go, how would they be funded, and how they could meet the 7% debt level limit. So that's, that's the exercise we've gone through. So we don't know what our final debt needs would be, so we have a full review of our capital plan, but we were comfortable that this was a good, good starting place, and that if we, this was the best-case scenario we can bring forward, but it would not fit under your, both your rule about 7% and your rule about 10 years. Under no scenario would it fit. So we didn't want to waste everybody's time coming in on something that doesn't...
So to make it fit, one bond would have to go, one project would have to go 15...
Yeah, if you see, this chart, I think, is a nice visualization, although, you know, it can look sort of overwhelming, but if you see the color there, this, it's really a light green, I'm not sure what's showing up there. This issuance is the one that's running out 15 years, and so you're seeing as things are falling off, as we saw before, but what these new issuances would need to be and what they would, how they would fit under this, the slope line here, of course, is the 7% debt limit. And again, we're not assuming any budget increases after, because it's just too far out, after, I believe, it's seven years. It's just flat-lined out there, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Just wondering about the decision about including a senior center as an absolute, I guess I wasn't aware that that...
It's on the capital plan. We haven't, we haven't included it as a final, but we, we're working off the capital plan, and it is on the capital plan, so we have to assume it is a project that is still on the capital plan unless it comes off.
So just process-wise, does the Board of Selectmen vote on each item that goes on the, so there was a vote to put, that the majority of the Board of Selectmen voted to put the senior center on there?
When you start the capital plan, just quickly, what happens is, we look five years out, we're in the process of reviewing the capital, the senior center needs, so in order, the Board of Finance has a rule, if it's not on, then you can't put it on a year before, so we have to...
Well, that's the charter.
That's the charter.
That was the charter.
But you vote, you vote on us.
This is the charter.
But the capital comes as one year to us, but here's the plan for five years out.
So because we are looking at senior center needs and we have an estimate of what it costs, it's on the capital plan, but it's not authorized to use full, but it is something that's on the capital plan, yeah.
And I'm just trying to understand the process of just to even put it on the capital plan, does the...
So the Board of Selectmen has to vote on the five-year plan, as the Board of Ed does. So something can't get on a capital improvement plan from the town unless it's voted on by the Board of Ed for education projects and Board of Selectmen for all projects.
I know I've heard a lot of folks talk about a community center versus a senior center.
And that would be true.
And do we even need a new building at all? Maybe we need new programs, but not necessarily new buildings, and I'll tell you honestly, I've had a lot of seniors tell me they're far more concerned about seeing impacts to their taxes than they are about having a new building built in town.
And that they need, well, for this, this, purposes of this exercise, we took what was on the capital plan.
So it's not a foregone, I just wanted it to be clear, it's not a foregone conclusion that we're going to build a senior center.
You look at the plan, five years ago, what was on for this year is dramatically different than what...
This was in response, I believe, I believe it was Barbara last time.
Expectations that might or might not be fulfilled.
This is really an affordability analysis on what could be done, which is exactly what we asked for.
There's an amen to needs study, I mean, there's wants and needs, in my opinion, so truly, the needs, we always find money for the wants, we don't always find money for...
I just wanted to make sure we weren't creating expectations that...
Right, and I think as Barbara pointed out last time, you know, what's the sense in having something that's just a wish list that could never be financed?
Right.
What we went to PFM with was, what we have out there, take it or leave it.
We asked them to do that.
This is what the town wants to do, and the answer is no, not under your current criteria.
And so what they did here is, option A and B, option A, the only real exception to the current limitations would be Henry James at 15 years, in order to fix, other than obviously moving out a year and those things we just discussed. Option B, this is, again, the numbers to back up that chart before. Option B was, it really is keeping, let's see, senior center in FY '16, again, same movement of the two projects, but the option of, of bonding the senior center at 15 years, again, under the same theory that it would last, the structure would be lasting longer and it's a little more equitable. This next chart is showing, we also wanted to see kind of what, how would it fit if our budget increase was only 1% a year? So what you're seeing here is a, sort of a flatter line, only a 1% budget increase in case we thought one and a quarter was too aggressive. What that would mean is, is one pro, you know, one of those years, we'd just be in violation, so what we needed to do was put the senior center at 15 years. And again, I think what this is trying to show, too, is there's a lot of moving parts, and there's a lot of options in how you structure this stuff. But I think we thought it was responsible to show what the decisions could be if, if you want the projects that are currently on the CIP to go forward, and as we start to think about how you'd finance those, what of your own sort of policies and limits, you may have to have an exception or two, to, in order to do it, which I think is a fair analysis.
Thank you for the presentation. Now, one thing, in, before we did the high school, with that 7% guideline, we used to pay cash for capital. We didn't always finance, until we put the high school on. So our board could say, we don't want debt service to be at 7%, we want debt service to go down to five, when that high school drops off. Give us a plan that way, and we'll pay cash for the month. So we have flexibility as to how we set guidelines and policies.
I think that's exactly right, Peter. As we're having PFM available to you, and a meeting just devoted to capital, I think it's helpful to you, because you can take this chart and PFM...
They can play with the numbers, right.
But we asked the Board of Selectmen to come in with a plan that at least fit into the 7%.
Right.
And, because it hasn't always, because there's a lot of projects on there to get on there, because they just somehow get on.
And you can see, we didn't, it didn't meet limits, it couldn't, under your restrictions. We couldn't make, you know, a size five, two, fit on a size eight.
Yeah, but I, but I've said to, I'm blue in the face, over years, that when we talk about this 7% debt constraint, it is not a policy. It is a guideline.
That used that word here, it says guideline.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but, I mean, everybody seems to think we can't violate this, and we have.
We have, I know.
Yeah, we have.
Yours to do what you will. But then it's a number.
So can I just ask one more question? This is great, because it's exactly what we asked for, so thank you for having them do this exercise.
Sure.
My, my question would be, I heard in how you prioritize that they were going to do pieces of Henry James earlier, is there, have you, can you give us a list of all of the proj, well, maybe, is that this list?
So that's what I just handed, right.
And so does this mean that everything here is funded in these A and Bs?
Yes, and so the reason it says, as of January 9th, and because, again, it's a working document, we want to make sure all the departments have gotten things on there that they...
But again, this is incomplete, that's...
We understand.
Right, but, but yes, so as of January 9th, that's when we submitted to PFM, so we wanted to kind of apples to apples of what's on there. And I think if you go down on the second page to Board of Education, and Burke, go for jump in if I'm wrong.
You'll see that there's a Henry James renovation project, the second line down, and then there's an alternate A, alternate B. So the Board of Education's had several meetings where they have reviewed drafts, and it's still a draft, and this is what we've had back most recently. So alternate A shows a new cost estimate from the architects who did the concept design for the estimate for the, for the entire project. We had them update that this fall, so 775,000 is the cost of moving the main office. And then alternate B, we were asked to, to look at, and those are new costs, that 280,000, and that would just do some basic renovation and maintenance of the, of the first floor hallway, things like carpeting, lockers, ceiling, and lighting, just basic maintenance.
All right, well, I appreciate the information, I think that gives us something to look at. Now, one other thing, on capital non-recurring, I guess, you know, one of the things we have to talk about is, we, last year, we set a new, we raised it, actually, because we funded, put more money into that fund, so we allowed them to do that. Both boards been apprised of that number, are they focused on?
We've asked Sean to plug in the same number that we used last year, unless we do a different thing with Board of Finance.
I don't think we're going to give you anymore, I assume that's going to be the number we had last year for capital non-recurring.
Yeah, that's what we're, assumption we're operating on.
So everyone's focused on that?
Yes.
Do you happen to have the number off the end, Sean? Was it a million and three?
Board of Selectmen's, it's last year's. Current, current year, Sean, do you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, current year, sorry.
2014, I have 416.
570,000 for Board of Ed.
570,000. All right, so that's about... It's about a million, yeah, that's where I thought we were at.
That's the correct decision.
Yes.
All right, any other? Well, as Peter, as Peter has said before, the purpose of this is, you're, you're building this, this amount of money into the budget over a five-year period. That's essentially what it's doing.
And it's very helpful. We have a lot of partners that fit that definition.
And we increased it last year, but it slowly, it feathers into your operating budget, it increases, so basically it gets a steady stream of spending on type, equipment type items. And, and it keeps us from having to go out into the bond market for relatively small amounts of money. Okay, any questions of the Board of Selectmen anymore? All right, well, thank you. Yeah, just one. Are we, we have a planned bonding coming up at this point?
The thing is, on the schedule, yeah, no.
It's not on the schedule.
In that scenario, we would be, if we agreed to those scenarios or went with one of those exact options, though, we would do it, do it, so.
Something like up in the 5 million range, though.
That's right. Well, three, I think it's three, what they're assuming in those charts was 3.7 million, so. Pretty much the most that fits anyone under that 200,000 or so that we have available.
Gotcha, okay. All right, well, that ends the first part, that was our initial meeting. I think it has been helpful, though, I think it gave us a lot of information for the budget process and gave us an opportunity to understand what both boards are up against, and we appreciate the information that we received. Does anyone want to take a five-minute break? Okay. We'll go into recess for five minutes.
[laughter]
All right, so we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. Flows into that year. So that's sort, what I was trying to get at is, do we have a plan for what we're bonding this year? Because some of it really depends on what assumptions you have about the growth.
Capital non-recurring.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the second item of our agenda, election of Chair and Vice Chair. Can I entertain a motion? Barb?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, but I also would like to just preface it with, we don't have a full board tonight, and I personally took the initiative to call Jeff Blumenthal, because I was concerned on electing a Chair and a Vice Chair without everybody having a chance to participate. He indicated he was fully comfortable with us doing the election tonight and that he supported both Peter and, and Nick for the roles, so I just wanted to make sure that nobody thinks that we're trying to do something because we have a 3-2 board tonight. We have permission from our missing member to, to take action tonight. And having said that, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Peter Askam to serve as Chair and Nick Mason to serve as Vice Chair for the Board of Finance.
Do we have any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Any other motions or discussion on it?
No, thank you, Barbara, for taking the initiative and doing that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savages? Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for vote of confidence and trust. I think we'll be interesting here, so try to make this as best weekend for all the taxpayers of the town. Minutes, I looked through the minutes. I have a lot of questions. A couple of things didn't get interpreted right. If it's okay, we'll defer those to the next meeting.
Nick, a motion to table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll table those. And anybody's got changes, just put them in. Thank you. So we'll get those going. Finance Director's report, Sean, why not?
Well, and I don't know, basically, I'm realizing there's another meeting coming in here at 7:30, so I don't know if you want me to read the whole report or...
We could go on the motion to, to get our unit.
We did.
Yeah. If you want me to read the whole report as I did last time, or if you just have questions about what I submitted.
There's another meeting here.
Before we hit some highlights.
Why don't you just briefly hit a couple of highlights?
All right, so tax collections, we had a good December ahead of what we had the previous December, so we like, if you recall last time, we were just a little bit behind on a month-to-month, and when I say a little bit, it was .14% on our collection rate. So with the really good December, we don't typically, we don't run any numbers because all the, so many payments come in in this month of January, we'll have a good sense after January 31st of where we are. But with the good December, I think we're right on target for where we were last year, so I like the chances of a 99, 99.6, 99.5, 99.6 target. The audit results, you know, you should all now, I think, be in receipt of your CAFR. I know many of you had a chance to take a deep dive, and so to the extent, you have any questions about that or the management letter, you know, I can certainly answer any questions.
I think we're going to probably at a meeting, either next meeting or following meeting, we'll get the auditors in here.
Yeah, I already checked on that, and they're available, I think she's not available the night of the February meeting, but Vanessa Rosito from Bloom Shapiro is available in March or at our regular March meeting, so if you want to have her in then, we could...
So we'll get her in March, and then if people come up a list of questions, we can kind of go through that.
Sure.
And I think in your report, you have a list of all our experts. Did you put in?
Yeah, you're right, so, and I can jump to that. At the end, we do have a listing here of all the financial consultants, as Peter had requested. It's not all, but these are some of the most key related to this board. Our actuaries, Milliman, who do our pension valuations and also help us with our pension calculations, payment calculations. Becky Seelman is the principal there, and she's our kind of lead contact. Again, Bloom Shapiro, Vanessa Rosito, I, I should say FIA, sorry. Oh, independent, sorry, Independent Investment Financial Advisors is FIA, which is fiduciary investment advisor. They've helped us with our pension plans, investments, and 457 to FERICOMP structure investment.
Are they doing the OPEB too?
Yes.
Uh, yep, yes, that's right. And so again, PFM, who provided the presentation you saw earlier, obviously they help us with our bond structuring and planning and strategy. Bill Fazioli is the gentleman out of Providence who came out to meet with us a couple of weeks ago as we went through that presentation and some of that strategy. Bond Counsel is Dave Pitney. Judith Blank has been our lead bond counsel attorney for a while, I believe now. And again, Lindbergh and Ripley, I know there's a lot of things with insurance and benefits and Obamacare and mandates and a lot of this stuff that's really, has big financial impacts, so things that this board will be interested to know about. You know, all of these, some I'm sure for a fee, but a lot, all of these will be available to come out and talk if there's any future issues or questions you have that you think they'd be of help.
What I think we're going to try to do is plan to get, you know, investment advisors we should get quarterly, just to come inform us. The auditors, we should get here, the actuary, because there's key estimates used in the calculation for defined benefit, so we should get a education from Becky as to why they use what they use. I would like to get her out here, Milliman out here, you know, with PFM, obviously structuring, and we should get them here one time during the year. And insurance benefit consult, we should get them out here during the year too, at least once, so we at least can ask them why we have what we have and all the questions. So just wanted to get a list of people that we're going to try to bring in over the course of this year, and if anybody has any questions, here are the people we can go to, so you have it for your information. Burke?
Burke, do we have plans to, yesterday's meeting, the Insurance Commission meeting that got canceled, any plans to reschedule it?
We haven't set that date yet. We do have the carrier, the solidation, scheduled interviews for next, next meeting forward in that regard.
Only one other thought. Sean, you really ought to add Bob DiCrescenzo to this list of advisors.
Sure, yeah, of course. Town attorney, yeah, I can, I can add that to the list for sure. He goes for that side.
I just wanted to say thank you also for getting that audit done. I'm sure that must have been a deliberate effort to do that.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate that on behalf of us.
Getting that done timely is key for a bond meeting.
It's easy, we just locked him in.
Yeah.
I'm sure he must have.
Yeah, I can walk somewhere without the ankle brace on.
My daughter's six now.
Did she take it off?
Yeah, well, no, it's fine.
She's got a zapper.
Update on the Finance Director recruitment.
Sure, right, and as Peter and Nick know, we were, let's see, last Wednesday or Thursday, we had a number of candidates in for a large panel interview. I think it went really well. We have some very strong candidates there, and there'll be, I believe, a final round interview. First Selectman will be involved, and will be sending us some information. I believe that's going to have to be next Thursday, so we're trying to move quickly to get somebody permanent and full-time in this role, so things are going well though.
And you had some good candidates in?
Yeah, I would say so. Certainly from my perspective, I thought they were great. Peter and Nick could chime in, I'm sure.
My only, my only concern is that some of the better ones were, are living almost on the other side of the country.
Their way, yeah.
One living in Clinton, which is a haul if he's going to come up here.
So we'll see.
But as far as, we had some good applicants come in, so it was a good, it was a good selection.
It's a great town to move to.
Yes.
And even to commute to, I've commuted over an hour for three years, so.
What we're going to try to do is on the Finance Director's report, try to get, if you want suggested information, try to get that, so they can give us a report, give us some more information so we can take it out of our meeting and just put it into for-year information.
That's great.
So just items that you think we ought to just report on, we'll collect it and ask the Finance Director to do that and just give us an update, so they know, so we get a feel for what's going on and keep our pulse on the town.
Like in former class, I know your time is running late, but we do have a town clerk here, there is one item that's important to report in this case, and put in before you leave tonight. That is whether there's one, one public hearing or two. The timeframes are significantly different with one timeframe or two, with one public hearing or two public hearings, and that means that the budget referendum dates are significantly different, and the notification dates are significantly different. So if you had two minutes to let...
Can I just, can I, we have to technically make a motion to go to item seven on our agenda? Second?
Second.
Followed in favor? Aye. All right, go to item seven.
So I thought Carolyn could just very quickly give you the two scenarios that you have an option, but the sooner we know what you're considering, it will domino all the other deadlines and factors, so.
Right, so just very briefly, and Carolyn's going to hand out a memo she wrote to myself and, with the registrars, to myself and Mary.
Can you tell me what I need to know?
As you can tell, it's complicated. There's a lot of factors, including hiring staff and ordering ballots and all these things that the registrars and town clerks need to know in advance, so as much planning as we can give them. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but I wanted to review that, this budget preparation schedule options that I include in your packet. It's just something to think about, whether or not you're going to want to have the two public hearings. I think everyone remembered last year, the second public hearing was basically prior one. What we could do is have just one public hearing, and depending on when the budget is actually filed with the town clerk, and you can jump in if I'm wrong on any of this, but basically, that's what ends up by charter triggering the referendum date. So I think as we're trying to figure out with as much notice as possible, you have two scenarios there, option A and option B. Option B includes having a special meeting of the Board of Finance while not technically a hearing, but with public audience to sort of substitute for that, if you don't want to make your budget approval decision the same night as the hearing. That's going to be kind of one of the questions. And option A, you'd be approving it immediately following that one public hearing.
If you recall, late nights, it's a lot to do in one night, so we thought another option would be to close the public hearing, have another meeting after that to poke your nails, let's say, finally adopt.
Right, ultimately, whichever your last hearing is, you have to vote on...
And that's option B?
Within 10 days, you have to vote. So it's either that night or within 10 days. So one option is option B, where you have a special meeting. That could be the vote. Rather than actually hold a full, formal second public hearing, you could have public audience prior to your vote to get any last minute things sorted out. The only issue with that, as I put asterisks, is that would fall in school vacation week, so that second meeting would be during school vacation week, so I want people to be aware of that in advance.
Which is what week?
16th.
The 14th to the 18th.
Right now, what do we have in our calendars? What do we have?
So right now, you have in your regular meeting calendar, you have two public hearings, an initial and a, and I believe I passed that out at the last meeting. On April 29th, I believe you have a second public hearing.
All right. I don't think we need two public hearings, unless we feel the budget is at...
It just makes a long evening, that's all.
So I'd go for the one public hearing, but sometimes we need to sit on it more than that night.
Right, so option B would give you the extra six days of those 10. Unfortunately, that's the latest, because that following weekend ends up being Good Friday, so you can't file, I can't file a budget with the clerk on Friday because we're closed. Saturday, Sunday becomes Easter, and that's actually the 10-day limit, so...
So it's 10 calendar days?
It's 10 calendar days from April 10th, and so that's April 20th, which is a Sunday, so it's a quirk. The latest you could have it really is April 16th, because the filing can't happen that night. It has to be when they're open and it happens physically the next day.
There's no, like, contention if the 10th day falls on a...
Well, and I, maybe the town clerk could chime in if there is any option.
Well, there are, I don't know if it would happen in this instance, but there are times when they, if it's a weekend or a holiday, then you go to the next day, be the Monday. Right, that would make sense.
That would be cutting it pretty close, but you could potentially file it on, if you wanted to have your meeting maybe on that Thursday, it could be filed maybe that following Monday after Easter.
We get concerned though, because we don't want any opportunities to challenge the budget process, so we try to do enough, in case there's, you know, we try not to butt up against the deadline should I, you know...
If we want to have the budget public hearing on the 10th and that night approve it, we can still, we have to notice a meeting to do that, right?
Yes.
That's still fine, right? And that would end up, that's right. And under this scenario where you still wait to file for seven days, I think I say there on Thursday, the 17th, as long as you're, if I, so you vote and approve that night, but I wait seven days to file, that triggers a referendum May 6th rather than a referendum April 29th. Traditionally, referendum's in May anyway, people are used to it in May. We, I would suggest keeping it in May, so what that means is I, even if it's ready, I sit on it for six days and then I file with town clerk. That's what the charter makes us do.
Well, we can, we can pass a motion to tell you to do that.
Absolutely, right, and you could tell me.
And that's if we have the meeting what date? April 10th?
The hearing, right, so you have to have at least the first hearing by April 10th, and yours is scheduled for April 10th, that's by charter. If that is your sole hearing, then that becomes the only...
What do you need from us tonight? What decision do you need?
Well, we just need, the town clerk would need a sense as to whether the Board of Finance is looking to have one public hearing, an earlier May referendum date, or two public hearings or a later May referendum date. That's pretty significant for them to be able to make all the decisions.
Carol?
If I could, my memo to you is to demonstrate that this board is pivotal in everything that goes on with the referendum, with all the preparations that I, my office does and that the registrars do, because when, the date of the referendum is triggered, when the Board of Finance files the budget that they approve with my office, so it doesn't, so there's no fixed date. We used to have one, which was town meeting, first Tuesday in May, and the Board of Selectmen has to decide the date of the referendum. The registrars and I are going to be preparing ballots, hiring people, doing notices in the newspaper, and we need to know the date, and we need to know what the questions are going to be. And you're going to decide, you have to approve the budget so we know what the numbers are going to be.
Your preference is one public hearing.
Well, I don't necessarily have a personal preference.
You just need to know the time.
And the two options we laid out here, both have a referendum on May 6th, so you don't actually have to make a decision as long as you're comfortable.
I think consensus is, unless I'm hearing otherwise, one public hearing.
Right.
So have it by the 10th, and we need a little flexibility in case we want to have the 16th meeting afterwards, in case we don't decide that night.
You can have that special meeting.
Still might want to do it that night, depending on how the budget process goes. If everyone says, "We love the guidelines and we need them," I, you know, I don't sense a problem.
That's helpful.
That's all we need, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, we want to let the public have as much advance notice as possible as to whether or not we're going to do it. So if we're looking at a basis, start trying to start to put that on our audit type. Thank you.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yep.
Yes, I'm okay.
And then the Board of Selectmen has an opportunity to actually decide what Tuesday referendum will be, and that's the date that we, everybody else is going to.
We've got to get to your earlier question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's go back to item five.
Thank you.
Our discussion on the budget. Everyone heard the guidelines or the start of the process from both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education. We had discussed guidelines a month ago.
Peter, just for clarification, that's item four?
Yeah, what is?
Discussion of the guidelines.
Guidelines.
It's option, it's option five on the new agenda.
New agenda.
Four is, because we merged them. Number one became, sorry.
Yeah, and so many, there's a few agendas, sorry, they merged in and it became item five.
Okay, sorry.
Good, I get, whatever.
Everyone on, yep, okay. So I know before we had thrown some scenarios up there, does anyone want to start with guideline concept? I know in the past, we've issued ranges where we've gone, you know, low, medium, high. We've done absolute numbers, our board has done. You know, I think it's just a conversation, I think it's kind of consensus. I'd like it to be here and just see where everyone's feeling, take the temperature so the boards get some direction as to where we feel we're going, so we're not held absolutely to this number, but, or if it's a guideline, it's a range so that they can work at it. You know, we've given stretch ranges where we've gone low, medium, you know, different ones, so anyone like to start off, or any thoughts?
Would you like me to kick off?
Well, if you want to kick off, Nick, I'd be happy to hear it.
I am particularly concerned about what our tax level is, and quite frankly, I'd like to see our tax, you know, our tax mil rate come in either flat or possibly down. If we have like quarter of a percent increase in the grand list, if we provide a little bit of flexibility with the collection rate that we use in our model for setting the mil rate, it seems to me that it gives us a little bit of, a little bit of wiggle room[1655.01] a little bit of wiggle room in terms of what we ask of the three boards. I, at this point, would still like to see from both of the boards what minus one, zero, and plus one, you know, produces in terms of the kind of budgets they put together. Quite frankly, I'd like to see us come in at zero or lower, but I'm not sure that that's going to be possible.
Yeah, I know in the past, we've had ranges and we said, "What's the impact if you go from high to low?" And what prioritize the, what would, what would get you down to that number? Is that what you have in mind, vision, something like that?
It's been a number of years since we've done that, but, but I think we need to understand what the stresses are.
So Nick, are you, just, are you thinking that if they came in at zero and we were able to get a little grand list growth in the collection rate conversation, that's going to bring us in at negative?
Well, it'll bring us in, I mean, quite frankly, the grand list drives the whole thing and the, and the, and the expense increases that we build into the budget. I mean, as a base case, if, if you use zero across all, all four pieces of the budget that we look at and a quarter of a, of a percent on the mil rate, essentially that produces about a quarter of a percent reduction in, in what the mil rate would be for the next year. It's almost one for one. Depends a little bit on the supplemental auto and all that stuff that we build into it. Minus, minus one and a little bit of flexibility on our part on the collection rate would actually start moving the mil rate down perhaps half a point or so. I'm not sure that that's going to be possible though.
Or Linda, any questions or thoughts or?
I agree with Nick, actually. I think we need to see a couple scenarios and have a better understanding of what the impact is. And I think minus one, zero, and plus one is a reasonable request. And my goal also is to come in with a, you know, flat mil rate change this year.
Okay. Laura?
I'm, I'm comfortable asking the two boards to come in with that range, minus one, zero. And one, I would want to understand the impacts that each of those scenarios would have on the budget. Not so much to micromanage how to spend their money, but to make sure I'm doing my diligence with the financial oversight of the boards. I do think that the grand list growth is going to probably drive more of whether or not we can come in, in my mind, for my decisions without coming in at a flat mil rate. I think that's a goal to shoot for, but I want to make sure that we're delivering the programs and services adequately while maintaining some funny, you know, sound financial oversight over accountability. So I, long story short, yes, if they can come in with those three scenarios.
The only thing that I do have a concern about, I feel like I don't have enough information on the Board of Selectmen budget yet. And that's because I don't even know what the contractual obligation is driving. So they have to offset whatever that is and I just don't know how big that is. We do know on the Board of Ed side, they shared with us, that's over a million dollars, which is well over one percent. So that means, and, and they did show some reductions, but the net of them, I'm concerned that even a one percent is going to be a challenge for them. I mean, I think, I'm okay with asking for zero. Minus one from the Board of Ed this year seems like knowing that they're at plus one something, just meeting their contractual obligations and adjusting for their headcount reductions associated with student enrollment dropping might be a significant programmatic impact. But I guess we need to ask the question and at least take a look at zero and one. But I think, as they know, they've got to bring us back a responsible budget. We should ask for what it means to have that, but I think they also have to come in with what they think is the correct budget to us too. So I just want to make sure we leave that flexibility.
Is that, Nick and Peter, historically, like sort of the guideline versus the cap that you give? I mean, we're, we're talking, we want to see these scenarios, but we're, we're not, under any circumstances, go above one?
We can go to any number we want to. I mean, what we're to look...
They bring, they bring us a budget of, of one and we're hearing compelling reasons like, wow, for them to get through the one, given their contractual obligations, they had to do this, this, and this, and I'm not comfortable. No, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, they can.
I mean, I think what we're trying to do tonight is give them a consensus of what we're thinking, what we think would be reasonable. We're starting to hear compelling reasons. We heard a good argument from, from the Board of Education. The Board of Selectmen has presented their challenges too. We, we don't know the absolute number, but, you know, both boards have challenges. I think it's our board's responsibility to, to maybe give stretch goals, you know, see what it does, measure the impact. There's some good collective, I guess, working together to lower everyone's costs, which I found very encouraging that both boards are working together. I found that extremely encouraging. I know if you look in the financial, there's some other areas to look at. Our favorite self-insurance fund, there's a lot of ways to look at things. And I don't think it would hurt to have everyone to do a range. I was looking, you know, agreeing with Nick as far as, I'd like to see a mil rate reduction, you know. Love to see it in my career, you know, it's been a long time. We've never had one. I think it's doable. I think, you know, we have to look at how we do things too. I mean, you know, our collection rate is something we have to look at. We, we've been challenged on it, but we've built our reserves to a point where, you know, we're, we're at 12. Well, if you take out the Simsbury Farms, we're technically just under 12 because we, we really got to fund that. That negative is really, we own that reserve too. And in the financial, they didn't kind of give it to us if you look. So we really are at about 11.8. So 12 to 15 is a range. I think we, we have adequate reserves, so we're probably at that point and we have this year to build some more. So, you know, we have flexibility where we can pay cash for capital this year instead of maybe bonding. So there's a lot of things we can do over time, I see. But if we look at the collection rate, we could probably go a half point and not jeopardize. Too bad, you know, we need financial flexibility. We need to make a profit, so to speak, to show the rating agencies why we're a good town. We can, we have the ability to add the reserves. We're not just slashing all our budgets. And, you know, it's nice on the revenue side, but on the expenditure side, we can't slash our budgets so we don't give the same services and we get all the citizens in an uproar and we don't approve budgets. So we've got to think about what's responsible for all the citizens of this town, not just one group. So that's why I think a range would be appropriate. As we go through this process, we're early in the process. We can't give an absolute number because there's too many factors we don't know about. But I think we owe them a guideline. I would have no problem with a negative one, zero, or one as a guideline. Not to say that we could deviate from that one if we have to. You know, if there's compelling reasons, and, and they're strong enough compelling reasons, we have to do it, we, you know, we have to give them the number they need. Otherwise, we, we slash quality or, or we make some hard choices in this town. So, so as far as, I don't believe we need to take a vote. I think boards sitting here can get a consensus. I think you're hearing pretty much a negative one, the zero, one compelling, you know, what would be the priority to get to there? What would be the items?
Could I clarify?
Sure.
On the Board of Ed budget, Matt, you've put together what I think is your base, somewhere in the one and a half to 2.2 number. I'm hoping you'll start there and then tell us what going to one, zero, or minus one will require. That's, that's what, that's what I, I'm, I'm not saying I, I'm picking any one of those as being where I'm coming from, although again, as, as I said earlier, and I agree with Peter, I'd like to see us, you know, bring the mil rate in flat if, or, or better if we can. But I, I want you to start with your, what you've presented to the Board of Ed as your base case.
And when the, the assessment comes in from the, we find out what the grand list growth is and it's one and a half percent, we have an easier conversation. But if it's zero or negative, like we've had some years, it's, it's very difficult, you know, with these conversations. I think you can see by the graph, the town has moved in a very responsible direction the last five years, or five or six years. Both boards have been very responsible and, and I think that's important. I think we're at a crossroads now as to where, where we're going the next five years. That's why I think long-range planning's key to, to model out the town and realistic grand lists. What can it grow? What can we do? What's the reality? So when they negotiate contracts, we look at benefit plans, the big drivers of the budget, here's what you got to work on. You know, they've worked tremendously on in the last few years. I think we're, we're seeing the benefits of a lot of hard work and we really appreciate it. You know, a lot of good contract settlements, the insurance has come down. Investment market has helped us in the pension. You know, we can talk to the actuary about how she looks at assumptions. There's many ways we can work on some numbers there to help everyone out. So I think if we all put our, our heads together, we work together on this, I think we can come up with a decent budget, but I think we could move in a more, you know, responsible range that would give the taxpayers a little relief. So I think it's doable, but it's going to take a lot of work and everyone working together. So I like what I see so far. We're not trying to be the, the bad guys that, that say, "Here it is." But I think we all have to work to showing the taxpayers what, that we've made a, a good effort in, in trying to lower their taxes low as possible.
And, and from my perspective, it's not just showing the taxpayers that, but it's also trying to maintain Simsbury's sort of competitive status against other towns. I mean, I'm hearing from realtors that it's harder and harder to sell a house in Simsbury. And the number one reason they say over and over and over is taxes, taxes, taxes. That people can buy a, a house of equal value with an equally good school system in other towns nearby that have shorter commutes, you know, fancy town centers, whatever. And, you know, we, we have to be able to compete against that. And otherwise, all of our home values suffer and, you know, and all of our, you know, future budgets will suffer as well. So, you know, it's sort of balancing short-term and long-term. We've got to remain competitive almost like a business, you know, and so that, it's not just to give taxpayers relief, but actually to sort of preserve our community in the long run that we have to, to look, as you're saying, with a long-range view.
All right, well, on the operating budget, I think both boards have heard the ranges, what we're talking about. Capital non-reoccurring, I believe that's going to be the same as it was the prior year because we increased it last year. If boards want to spend less, they're more than happy to because it impacts their operating budget. But the same dollar amounts that we went up to last year would be the guidelines there. Does anyone feel any different there? I mean, we, we had a negative balance and have funded a year ago. We finally funded it right, so we didn't, you know, look funny as a deficit. I think we're over a couple hundred thousand. If you look at the financial, I got some tweaking to do in the financial when we get the auditor in here. But anyways, and then the capital improvement, we've heard that, that everything's trying to come into our guidelines. So I was encouraged by that presentation there that, that everyone's focused on, on making that work. You know, we have to discuss them ourselves. We ultimately approve it. We approved the one year on capital, but we still can make comments about the five-year plan. And we can, as you start thinking about this seven percent guideline, not an absolute number, but it's a guideline, how do we feel about that guideline? Talk about our financing bonds over 10 years or longer. A lot of these things will come up in the discussion, so we should have this dialogue so everyone understands why we do what we do and...
And I'd like to make sure we include roads in that conversation as time around.
You're going to get your roads.
I don't see how you can include roads if you're at zero. I mean, we get mixed messages, but I mean, if you put more money into the operating budget, you can't need the guideline. So I don't want to waste a lot of folks' time, but I mean, I don't see how those two things can be consistent.
Well, what I could see happening is when we put OPEB in, you know, some of those increases you show happened, big increases, when we put OPEB into both budgets, we said, "Your guideline was this," and then we wanted this to happen.
Right.
So we kept it outside.
Right.
So we're going to do something like that and be outside.
I won't bring it forward in the operating budget. It's not a...
It doesn't need to be within a zero operating budget, but it needs to be what it would be.
We'll show you what it would be and then we have to figure out how do we finance. I just didn't want to waste everybody's time, you know, trying to do something that's not going to be productive. So we'll, we'll do an analysis separate from the budget analysis because, thank you.
Enough said. I'm sure we'll have more conversation on this every meeting. And as we go through the budget process, it should be interesting. But I like what I hear so far. The, the boards are working hard and I really appreciate the effort, so. I know there's another group waiting to have a meeting. I don't know if they moved on.
They moved on.
It's been a long meeting, so we might not want to. On goal-setting discussion, we'd had your goal-setting in there. What I think we ought to do and, and Barbie came up the idea is maybe we take a look at the goals that people have submitted, get out what everyone's done in writing, and we come back the next meeting with our three most important goals to us. And we just try to try...
It'd be tough. There's a lot of them.
I know. Well, you try to group them into concepts and just say, "Here's, here's what I like to see as priority goals." And... And then we can come back and... Right. So we can kind of go through this and everyone can kind of formulate what they think would be priority goals. I'm looking for a short-term. You know, obviously for the budget season, we, we've talked about the mil rate as a goal. We talk about what we want to do this year. You know, we've got a lot to accomplish. We've got a year to do activities. So what do we want to accomplish our board this year in, in long-range planning? What do we want to see long-range planning? And that's, you know, get more of a concept goal there. But, you know, so I think if we come back and say, you know, "Let's narrow it down to three." You can have a separate list, auxiliary list, but at least, I've always found that in a person of three, usually you can at least accomplish three things, you know. So if we can agree on three, then maybe that list becomes five because we've got to get six people to agree. And, or at least put it on the list that we work towards it, that we, we get, we feel like we're doing something. We can prioritize our time and, and discuss things at every meeting and move towards making the town better off financially.
Some of these are, are completely in a different realm than others. You know, the mil rate is something totally different than coming up with a dashboard of metrics. You know, the latter being processed, the other, the former being, you know, an outcome for, of our duty. So I'm just wondering if we might group these somehow.
Can I make a suggestion? Why don't Linda and I volunteer to come, to organize these in a manner that we can come back to give you guys lists to vote on? So we'll categorize if they're process things that we need to do versus goals of what we want to achieve. So, because there's a mixture here of process things and goals. And so it's very difficult to pick three with the list the way it's formatted. So why don't the two of us, because we're both agreeing that this is sort of hard to do, figure out how to put something together that we think everybody can work on?
I'm happy to do that.
Does that work?
Excellent suggestion.
Fine. I love being volunteers.
I like volunteering.
Since you're saying that I agree, I don't say you, but...
Excellent suggestion.
Let me put in your volunteer, step forward.
Step back. All right. We already did number seven, discussion of the meeting calendar committee assignments. I know one thing we have to decide on is we need that annual report committee going. And Jeff had said he would like to work on that. So I'd like to put Jeff on that because he's not here, but because when he was here, he said...
That'll show him.
No, he, he expressed interest in getting on that and I thought that would be excellent for him. Is that, could be on that and...
I, I think that makes sense. I mean, I've, I've been working on it now for four or five years and I think rotating it around a little bit makes some sense.
Yeah. And then who else would like to get on that?
I'm sorry.
You want to work on it? Okay, Maura would work on that.
I'm not sure you need two people, but...
Oh, in that case.
Well, you can just...
This is my thinking.
Why don't you, why don't you and Jeff? That'd be good to have both of you work on that. Because they work with...
Well, we're not going to work with John.
Well, it'll be...
I'm sorry to say. We're, we can't assign it, we're going to assign a, we're going to assign a staff person to work.
Okay. We have a deadline of, and the May, issue that? I believe it's statutory report we have to get out.
We'll have a conversation with Maura and Jeff, talk about timeframes and process.
The one thing I request is when we do the picture, we do a picture of the whole board. I'd like to see that, so the whole board gets their picture in there.
We did that a few years ago, but we haven't done it recently.
Yeah, I'd like, just like to see a picture of the whole board in there and, you know, it's a great, it's a nice report and the cover's been excellent, whatever they've done. They've done great jobs the last few have been phenomenal and I, I think it's, it's good. So, all right. As far as other committees, we don't have anything else pressing that we have to do as we, for other committee assignments. I don't think I've anything pressing, but...
Can I stay on Facilities Task Force?
Yes.
Because it's ongoing.
Just a couple of clarifications for, are we, the retirement, you, or we, Ms. Paul made a point. There were two people.
You're doing the sub, the retirement subcommittee?
Yeah.
Well, Paul, Paul and I have been on it up until now.
I'm assuming you're, you're going to continue on.
I will continue.
And then I was going to ask the chair.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
We're going to be recommending that to the board, but on Monday, everything's been chaired and done to me. But if Nick's been...
We're going to continue on, both of you. That's great.
Are you doing other committees as well?
Just some cleanup committees that we...
Have you done insurance?
Well, we need to do that too. So we're just going to reappoint everybody who's on it, unless someone else is on it.
We'll go on the retirement. Now, as far as insurance, who's on that? Are you?
I'm, I'm on it and I think Chris Peterson is on it. And...
Is anyone else from our board on?
Not from our board, no.
Do you want to stay on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, just one from this.
Just one.
Just get us some other savings.
Do you, do you want to try insurance or do or no? Or just leave Nick?
If one's enough, I'm happy to leave it at one. I'm following Maura's lead.
How about the investment, the pension and committee there?
Well, that's the retirement subcommittee.
Oh, that's retirement, oh, that's what you call retirement subcommittee, I'm sorry.
There are two from the Board of Selectmen, two from the Board of...
All right, now I, I'm good with numbers, not names, so you have to excuse me. All right. Anything else?
The Hartford Task Force will be appointed.
Paul and I were, started that, I, we only had like one, then Paul did some stuff, and I wasn't part of the-
Yeah, so I'll just, we did reappoint everybody who came, I'll just double check to see if you wanted to be on that, Peter, we could add you.
Sure. There's one other Business Development Committee?
You came.
Yes, I did.
So I think you're on. We're all the same.
Business Development Committee, I, I've been on that, and that's when we have a tax abatement program, and they have one, one member from each board, zoning, planning, meet with Hiram, runs at Mary's on it, and, you know, somebody from Board of Selectmen. I'd love to have someone else get on that. You know, basically, when, you go through applications and see if they meet the requirements that they have, and sometimes you would deny people because they didn't come in timewise right.
Let me meet when we have an application.
You have an application.
I'll do it.
Anyone else have any interest, or anyone?
Sure, I'll do it.
Well, I think we just need one on this.
Oh, okay, whatever.
You want to be on it, Maura?
Yeah.
Is that all right? Because you're on one, you'll be on that one? Okay, so put Maura on that, and I think that covers it. And then if we have like public building or something, projects come up?
Well, in the-
Oh, Senior Center was one more, we're doing one tonight, so there's a representative.
Well, I'll take that one.
Well, a number of years ago, Kevin and I were the liaisons to the Public Building Committee, but after the, after we got through with most of the heavy lifting-
That's basically what it is.
On, on the high school and, and the police renovation and so forth, I don't, maybe Kevin was going, but I, I haven't been in quite a long time, so I don't know what the need is there. You're the logical one.
I've been following them, I get their minutes.
Do you want to be on that? If they, if there's a need?
Yeah, if there's a need.
I mean, what we do is if there's big projects, we have a member, just, we look for scope group to make sure there's not scope creep to projects and things like that.
The only project that we have currently is the Senior Center, if you want to send them up and go there.
Well, the, the key ones coming up would be Latimer, the Henry James, and the, and the Senior Center, I mean, it seemed to me. That's, some of that goes out several years.
Interest?
Yeah, I said I would do it.
Oh, Linda, okay. Put Linda on it? Okay, good. That's it? I think that's it for those committees. All right. Other business, anybody have items for next meeting? That they want on?
I, I'd like to just understand a little bit more, and maybe it's not for the meeting, you could call me and educate me if that makes more sense, about what we invest, the, and I know that's the committee you're on, but what we invest our reserves in and what our options are, because I'm sort of-
First of all, that committee we're on only does pension.
But the, the, the now 13.4% of budget that we have in reserves earning basically zero is a huge concern to me, because we're taking taxpayers' money that they could be earning interest on, and we're putting it in something that's not earning anything.
That's a good point, because we have, we should put it on for next meeting. We have a policy, I believe there's an investment policy for that money we created a few years ago. We should go over that, and typically you deal with-
And just to look at what options we have.
Typically, we deal with the finance manager on that, the finance director, and they, you know, and frankly, we haven't looked at it in a couple of years, so I think it would be-
I know we're limited, but I don't know what the limit is.
Because right now, we're getting like one-tenth of 1%.
I know, it's pitiful.
If you look at the, so I think it's, we should get a schedule of what investable assets we have, extra cash over the year, and some recommendations on how to do it better, because that would help give us tax relief.
Right.
You know, we've got to look at the other revenue items, and the better we do there, we can get more tax relief there, so I think we have to focus on that.
Well, I think we're, we're, we, you know, the state runs, what is it, the STIF fund?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that there are many other options.
Well, when we did some interviewing, some of the other cities were actually doing Ladder CDs, and I'm trying to figure out how they do that and, and meet all the guidelines. So if they, that was interesting. I was, that interview process was, I picked up, I was picking their brain as, you know, they were trying to get a job, but I was just finding what they do in other towns, so we learned a few things, so I think, you know, I heard some things that we should pursue.
Yeah.
So I, I think we can make some hay there. But it's going to take, we've got to look at the facts, look at our policy, see what disposable money we have, then make a decision. But it's, typically you deal with the finance director.
Investable, not disposable. Investable.
Investable, sorry. Anything else for next meeting, people want to bring up?
Well, I mentioned to you out in the hall that we ought to do a follow-up with the Town and Rec Committee, and I gather that the Simsbury Farms now has a five-year plan, which we, I don't know, last May or sometime, we asked them if they had a long-range plan, they said no, now they have one apparently, you know, maybe we need to just do one of the sort of updates that-
Dave Bush is chair of the First Rec Commission, is going to try to schedule a three-board meeting to present, they're reviewing right now at their meeting, a bunch of recommendations, and they actually-
Do you want to, do they want to do a full Board of Finance meeting, or just a sub?
They want to do a three-board meeting, so, but I haven't seen the recommendations yet, so I'm waiting to, so I think you'll be getting a lot of them.
Why don't we, we'll, we'll try to get it on and see how we, it plays out, and-
Their board, Board of Selectmen, and Board of Finance?
Yeah.
I mean, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we're going to spend some time with, with actuary, with our auditors, you know, with our investment advisors, da-da-da-da-da, we need to sort of set up a, a schedule, because otherwise we're just going to get-
I'd like to get a calendar, because I, I put down like, we should have one meeting with this group.
I'd agree.
Four meetings with that, and we'll just schedule in the month and say, here it is, here's where we want to meet, and what's the purpose? It's a high-level meeting. You know, with the actuary, we actually talk about in-depth how they actuarially calculate that big number for the pension and OPEB, and we changed, last year we changed some estimates, and there's some more that you can look at. If you read the, the audit, just look at the, the way they do the market, they smoothed in it over four or five years on pension, and they don't on OPEB. So we don't on one, one we do. Well, now we're in a favorable market, so we could revisit that and maybe lower the cost. But, but then, on the other side of my mouth, our unfunded liability keeps increasing,